Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our city council meeting tonight, January 12th, 2015. We appreciate everybody being here. And as we begin, as we call a meeting to order, I want you to know that you can speak. If you want to speak on any of the items that are on our agenda, you may do so as we go through our agenda. And just raise your hand, we'll notice you, and come over here and tell us your name, and that's all you have to do. And appreciate any comments that you might have as we go through our agenda. At this time, we'll have council prayer, followed by pledge of allegiance to our flag.
May we pray? Heavenly Father, our Maker, and our Sustainer. We thank you for allowing us to see another day, and we thank you for all the families represented here tonight. Enable us to discern that which is good and that which is not. We pray for guidance and direction as we make decisions, and always be mindful, and let us always be mindful of the impact of the lives of the people that we serve. Continue to bless our community, our state, and our nation. Help us to always serve with sincerity and dedication. We ask you for safe travels for all families represented here tonight. And we just continue to be grateful, Lord, for allowing us to always see another day. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to go too many further, I'd like to recognize the Troop 115. I understand several members of the Troop are here, and I can see who they are. Raise your hand if you would. Would you do one other thing, too? Would you stand up and tell us your name, please, and where you are in the process of your scouting?
I'm James Long, I was the one for the Troop. And I'm just in order to start off, but I have to give you a little information.
Very good. Thank you very much, and we appreciate you being here, and hope you can learn something good from council tonight on how we handle that meeting. Council, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda this evening? If not, we'll move on to the minutes. Number one, consideration of the minutes of the work session, December 2nd, 2014; the regular meeting, December 8th, 2014; and the work session, December 17th, 2014. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I move that we approve both work sessions in addition to the regular meeting minutes from the previous meetings.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor, and passes unanimously. Under all business, first item is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Luttrell, please.
Yes, sir. We have three reappointments tonight and one new appointment. The reappointments are Nancy Dukes to the Board of Zoning Appeal, Ben Lot to the Design Review Board, Liz Stewart to the Planning Commission, and the new appointment is Alan Holland to the Environmental and Energy Committee by Councilmember Mary. So for your consideration, that is the reappointment of those three and the new appointment of Annie Helen.
And we have McDonnell Law as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss one?
Yes, McDonnell Law.
Thank you very much. McDonnell Law to the Design Review Board. Thank you, that's another reappointment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
Approve them, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? A show of hands, please, passes unanimously. Okay, how about nominees for next council meeting?
I have three. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Norman Donegan for the Energy and Environmental Commission.
Okay.
John Breck for the Board of Zoning Appeals. And Dr. Barbara Bing for the Park Commission.
Okay, good. Any others?
Yes, Mr.
Is John Breck on another commission?
No, he's the captain.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to reappoint Bud Coward to the BZI.
Any others? Okay, if not, then those appointees, or nominees, I should say, will be on our agenda next meeting. We'll vote on them at our next meeting. Item two, approval of requests for proposal to invest city funds. Mr. Luttrell, please.
Yes, sir. We have discussed this on several different occasions. We felt it was best we'd go ahead and get someone who has a little bit more expertise than us. We have 25 million approximately to invest. Currently, we're only getting .16 percent, that's less than 1 percent, at the state. And our investment policy currently written in the 1980s only allows us to invest in the local government investment pool. So we, tonight, would like you to consider a resolution that is before you, and the request for proposal to allow us to go ahead and invest these funds in different types of markets. Tonight, we have Warner Anthony here. Warner's been with us for, I was trying to figure out if it's been 30 years, or, it's been a long time. And he is the one that has guided us through our pension investment and has helped us along the way. So he has developed this resolution for the investment policy, and then also the request for proposal. Once we get the proposals in, he will go through and review those, and we would hope to present that to you in February to get this process started. What this will mean to the city is we feel that by change in our investment policy, that we will add, we believe, over $300,000 in additional revenue to our overall budget, $120,000 of that going into the general fund. So we think this is a very critical and very important move by the City of Aiken. And if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to have Warner go ahead and describe a little bit about the resolution and the investment policy.
Okay, all right. Glad you're here, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. I'd like to give a little background on this, some of which Roger's already covered. Mainly, the city has used the local government investment pool run by the State Treasurer's Office. That pool basically is involved very short-term investments, average maturity of a little less than 60 days. The returns in the past have been fairly reasonable on that, but because of the interest rate environment today, the returns now are zero, .16 percent or less. The city of its $27, $30 million there, the city has some needs for the monies maybe in a very short-term period immediately, and some needs for monies not for a longer period of term, maybe 18 months, and some maybe as long as two to three years. So the approach is to continue to use the LGIP for the short-term investments. That money is immediately available, can be transferred out of the, from the State Treasurer's Office, from the local government investment pool, to the city immediately whenever it needs. But for the monies needed on a longer-term investment, by buying longer-term maturities, a higher yield can be obtained. The whole purpose of the approach is to try to keep it simple. Right now, it's very simple. The city simply sends money to the local government investment pool with the State Treasurer's Office and gets money back whenever it wants to. So we want to keep this process simple without involving significant administration issues on the part of the city. One of the problems that we face is that South Carolina law imposes substantial restrictions on investments of governmental units, i.e. the city. Generally, the city is restricted to investments in U.S. government and agency obligations that must be held in the city's name. Certain other investments are permitted that I'll go through as we go through this. One point to make is that money market accounts are not a permitted investment. In a very limited situation, a government money market account may be used if bonds have been issued, but that limited exception is not available to the city funds we're discussing here. So money market accounts are off the table as a permitted investment. Bank CDs are a permitted investment, but the restrictions under the state statute that we must follow causes the use of bank CDs to be very complex. One, the bank CDs must be secured 100% by U.S. government or agency obligations, and actual best practices would dictate securing any bank CDs with 115% to 125% of the CD because you must be looking at that every day. And if you purchase a CD and a 10-year government bond is given as security, and the government bond loses value, you'd have to, additional security would have to be given. So you can see that using the collateralization, meaning that the money must be transferred out of the bank to a third-party escrow agent, you will need escrow agreements, you need collateralization agreements, you need daily record-keeping of this. It requires constant monitoring and is complex. Also, the use of bank CDs, I don't believe, will increase the bank's ability to loan funds to the local businesses. There's a study by a professor of economics who formerly worked with the Federal Reserve system in the Kansas City Federal Reserve monthly thing, that the studies show that banks, that deposits with banks, do not increase local lending and in fact make local borrowing more difficult, mainly because you give the bank $100 for the CD, the bank then has to take $115 and go buy government securities and transfer those government securities to an escrow agent. So there's no, it's not like a situation where a bank takes in monies from a CD and then has monies available to lend in the local community. So I believe that the easiest way for the city to invest the money on a longer-term basis without imposing substantial additional requirements on the city administration is to use U.S. government and agency obligations. What the city would do is to say, would identify those funds that it doesn't need for a period of time, would say, okay, other $30 million, $6 billion will not be needed until, let's say, June of 2016, or June of 2018. So the city would go out and buy directly from the issuer, from the federal agency, agency obligations that would mature in June of 2016, or June of 2018, or whatever date. So by getting a longer-term period, it will increase the interest that the city receives. The city wants to look for professional services to help them identify what bonds are best to purchase, and to purchase those bonds on behalf of the city to be held in the city's name as a city investment. That's a brief overview, and I'm opening, I know there've been a lot of questions, so I'd like to be here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Is there a period that you would recommend that they stay under, less than five years, or does it make any difference?
Well, I'm going to rely on your finance director to determine when she believes that the money will be needed.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? I'm not going to make that decision. Y'all are going to tell me, you know, when the money is going to be needed. And I believe she's going to err on the side of caution by probably initially keeping maybe more than absolutely necessary in the local government investment pool, just to make sure you have, you know, ready access to cash if a project comes up all of a sudden.
And my last question is, what would you anticipate would be the cost of a person to handle and recommend the bonds that we purchase?
I don't know. That's why we have the RFP.
Okay.
To get, I expect that we'll get bids on both hard-dollar basis and maybe percentage of assets being managed.
Okay.
But at this point, I have no idea.
Thank you.
In our perspective, perspectives, I guess either Ms. Ebner or Mr. Luttrell can answer it. Did we say no CDs, or is it automatically out? Because nobody's gone by 115% backup money, I would not think.
One of the problems, again, as Mr. Anthony stated, is with a CD, we'll have to spend more staff time monitoring expiration dates and the other things that would go along with it. By going with the U.S. bonds that we're talking about, it's going to take less monitoring by staff, and that's one thing, we don't want to sit here and have to hire a staff person just to monitor our investments that we have.
So it's not in here then?
Yeah, no, the resolution, under the, the new resolution, that to replace a resolution from the '80s authorizes the investment of government monies in the local government investment pool and only in U.S. government and agency obligations. Does not authorize investments in bank CDs.
All right. The other question, and you may answer this later on, about $10 million of that 22 or 23 million is capital project sales tax funds, and which is a separate voted on by the public. Does that make a, can we, is that considered part of this pool of money?
Yes, yes. It's all subject to the state statute on the limitation on investments.
Okay, thank you.
Hot liquid is this investment you're talking about, because we routinely turn it right around, and like Ebner said, we take money out of our rainy-day fund, if you will, and just project it towards one of the capital project investments. Would that hamstring us in doing that at all?
No. The money in the local government investment pool is immediately available, okay? And that's short-term, and that's pretty much at par.
That's the way we've had it, yeah.
Now, the government bonds and agency bonds that you purchase, the idea is to purchase them when you expect to need them. So, and so you'll know the yield to maturity. Now, if something happened and you needed to sell them, there's an immediate market for government bonds. You could sell them, but, you know, if interest rates had gone up since you purchased them, you might not get them back at your purchase price. So my idea has been that you would probably keep a little slush fund, extra money, in the local government investment pool to cover projects that might pop the head up outside of when you thought you were going to need them.
So, Mr. Anthony, just to be clear, the bond investments then would subject us to rate risk, is that right?
We're trying to minimize rate risk, because we're picking when you need, the state statute requires you not to invest in maturities any longer than the anticipated time to need the funds.
Of course.
So we're going to buy the bonds that mature when you anticipate you need them. Assuming that the decision of when you would need the bonds is accurate, there'll be no rate risk because at maturity, you'll get par. There's only a rate risk investment.
Unless it's callable.
Well, we're not going to buy any callable. I'm not recommending any callable bonds in this.
All right.
And I'm recommending you buy them directly from the agencies, you know, at face value or par. You wouldn't be buying, you wouldn't be paying any premium for these, you wouldn't be buying in the open market, be going to the agencies and buying them.
If interest rates had gone up 25 basis points on a $5 million bond, and we did need to access it sooner for whatever reason.
You would have some investment risk.
25 basis points on a, I mean, that may be an extreme example, but...
Well, I'll give you an example. I believe that three- or five-year government bonds in the last 30 days have gone down from 3% to 2%. That's a one-third. So if they went up, you know, so you're going to, so even if you approve this and we get all the proposals in, one of the things they're going to do is discuss with the person selected of when's the best time to go buy, because some of these you may not need for five years, and a decision may be needed, may be made, let's keep it in the LGIP for six months and see, you know, with what happens on interest rates. We're not going to want to be engaged in the business of interest rate arbitrage. But what we do want to do is try to get the best return for the city for monies that you won't need till a future date.
And we also want to make it as secure as possible. So in the absence of using CDs, what, other than LGIP, is there, is the only other choice, bonds, or is there any other hedge against that rate?
No, the only other choice is bonds.
That's, I mean, that, if the Fed does what it says it's going to do, that creates a, you know, that can create a
Yep.
... rather significant risk to us if we put some of that money out there for five-year bonds.
And, you know, let's assume that at the time, the bond is bought, that you're going to be comfortable, that the interest rate at that time is going to be better than you could have gotten in short-term. And, and so you may make the decision that it's sufficiently high enough, we're going to make that investment. But we're not trying to develop a policy where we're buying and selling bonds. We're going to buy them at that time. The obligations that you're authorized are obligations to the United States government, obligations of certain federal agencies that are properly, that are AA, are AAA rated, general obligation, I forgot, general obligation of the state of South Carolina are also permitted investment, okay? So we could buy South Carolina, but I did not put that in there. Then certificates of deposits, where the certificates are collateralized, secured by securities that are of the government or federal agencies, held by a third-party as escrow agent or custodian, of a market value not less than the amount of the certificates of deposits so secured, including interest. Repurchase agreements, where collateralized by securities are set forth in the section, but, so we don't want to get involved in that. Then, certain government mutual funds where there has been a debt issue, which does not apply here. And a certain exception for subdivisions with regard to Medicaid funds, which does not apply here. And those are the only investments the state statute permits. I mean, the state statute's very strict on this.
I mean, clearly, because of that rate risk, we're going to have to really overcommit to the LGIP, and then, and then be fairly sure that we won't need any of the money that's going into bonds early.
That's right.
I mean, we need to be doggone sure.
Yeah, that's right.
That's a significant risk.
Your choice right now is to just stay with the LGIP where you are, and with the low, with the almost no interest return in a bank. Or say, yeah, we overcommit to the LGIP because we're there already, and then with respect to the other monies where we're real sure we're not going to need them, if the interest rate is attractive enough, we're going to buy the agency bonds.
Another question that I've had is I felt very strongly that, that to what extent we could, that I would like to see this money invested through, you know, local institutions because of its potential benefit to, you know, the people of Aiken and the city itself. But so you're telling me that because of not being able to use CDs, because of using LGIP is the only liquid way to manage the money, and because of using these bonds, there's really no way for this to invest in our local community?
I'm not aware of any way to invest in it. I mean, the only way to invest in local, I mean, would be to buy CDs, but in that case, the local institution would have to go buy additional collateral of 115% of the amount of CDs.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
But there's no other way, because there has to be the government bonds held in the city's name, so that money's going to the federal agency.
Okay, all right.
As long as we buy the bonds, we're guaranteed the interest rate, provided we hold them to maturity.
Correct.
And then we're guaranteed 100% of the capital.
Plus the country comes to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Warner, we have, we have someone in the audience, at least one, I think, that would like to speak.
Sure.
And if you would just stay there, or, you know, hang there.
Step aside.
Come up, now, up here. Come up to the microphone up here.
Yeah, come on in.
And just so council understands, we have a depreciation fund for vehicles, equipment, buildings, computers, and that has stayed steady over the last decade or more. You know, it may go from $10 million down to $9 million, it may go from $10 million up to $11 million, but that's a very steady fund. That money goes in, money comes out as we need vehicles and equipment. So that's, that's the one constant that we have, that we know we could have for a longer investment. Now, obviously, the capital project sales tax monies that we have, we will be making projections, saying, well, we need money in year one, year two, year three, year four, and so therefore, again, less of that money's going to be going into these investments. But that's, again, and we're going to err on the conservative side until we can make sure we have done this long enough to get a better idea as to what we want to do probably the second time around.
Thank you. I'm Roy Lindberg, Security Federal Bank, here in Aiken. I just want to say, if anybody here needs a loan, be sure to see me, because we are interested in doing some CDs. We can make it fairly administratively simple, and we want to make loans in the local community. I would suggest that if you have a bond portfolio, you also need to monitor that every day for the fluctuations, because rates do go up and down. So I've been investing in bonds for 20 years, and a year ago, the 10-year treasury was 100 basis points higher than today. It could go the other way. So when your bonds are fluctuating in value, you need to be aware of that. You shouldn't rely on a third party. You need to really hone in on that. But we can make it administratively simple, relatively, monthly reporting. The state of South Carolina, I know they've got a bigger staff, they invest in bank CDs, and, you know, we've got third-party agreements. We send them reports every month. It's pretty simple. It's easier than balancing a checkbook. And I know there was a study done by the Federal Reserve, but believe me, we want to loan money. We're sort of blessed, well, maybe cursed, by we're living in a retirement community where there's more people interested in deposits than loans, so we want to make loans. So if you invest with us, we will make loans in the community. And we have several employees that live in the city, so, but I want to be a resource to you guys. I know about bonds. You can buy bonds at a premium if you hold them to maturity, there's no problem with those, or at a discount. Colloble bonds are okay, but you don't know when the maturity will be. And what else? We want to loan money, we can make it easy.
Give it away?
Well, pretty low rates relatively, unless rates go up, but then your bond portfolio's going to go down and buy you.
I do have a question for you, Roy. What we've just learned is that in order to properly collateralize CDs, held by a local bank, that the bank would have to go out and buy the collateral from a...
Well, we've already got excess investments, so... Well, we've, we've already got excess investments, so we can pledge those.
So, you simply pledge something you already own?
We already own it, so we don't have to-
Go buy something after.
Yeah, so, and we've got excess capacity to loan money, so-
So, you would then be able to turn this into an investment in the city?
Right. I think the study is not cause and effect. I think the banks already have excess money, so they're not loaning it because they're in our situation. So, that's why the study shows what it is, but-
But let me just, I want to-
Let me just say that, Roy, you've made a great presentation on, on your conferences, but we're gonna go out for RFP, I know you-
Yeah, and I'd be, I'd be happy. We wanna level playing field where everybody has the same knowledge, and the fees should be disclosed.
I wanna, I wanna make sure I understand this, and we're gonna give Mr. Anthony the opportunity to speak again also, but, so, if y'all have already got excess assets that you can pledge against these CDs, then if the city were to invest this money, you could collateralize it according to the federal and state standards, and at the 115%, 125% requirement under best practices, and still have new money that you could go out and lend within the community.
Right. We would have money to loan plus some.
Okay.
When we get to that point, we'll let you know. But that'd be a good problem to have for us.
And like Leslie says, you know, this, this is gonna ultimately be an RFP.
Right.
But I'm, I feel sure that other banks will have the same interest that you do.
Yeah, and I think government bonds are a good investment, but I think you need diversification, and we, we can provide quotes on bonds as well. I did wanna ask Mr. Anthony, money markets are not a permissible investment. Is that money market mutual funds or money markets in a bank?
No money.
No money markets, period. Because we could collateralize a money market as well, but if it's not legal, then I'd argue that, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
But you would need to monitor your bond portfolio and probably look at it every day, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Roy.
I think, Mr. Mayor, what he, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important not only for council to consider, but the audience, that, you know, that was information to the city, and it's not part of the RFP or anything at this point.
Correct.
And I think we need to be sure that we understand that. And I don't think any of us should forget that this is our money, sitting up here on council and everybody out in the audience and the other 30,000 people, so we need to be on the conservative side on whatever we do here, so, it's not a commercial, but I think we need to realize whose money it is.
Absolutely.
Mr. Anthony, can you speak to that, as he was explaining with the excess assets that he's got?
As I understand, and I'm not a banker, or don't work in the, in the Federal Reserve system in terms of collateral promise, but is, but it would appear to me that if he has excess bonds that he could collateralize, he could easily convert that to cash and make the loans. I do not see that investing a CD create, generates any additional cash. You give him $100 in a CD, he takes $125 of excess assets and collateralizes it, he still not, still does not have any extra cash from our CD purchase. If he's got extra assets and wants to make loans, he can liquidate those assets for the cash to make loans. So, I don't see where the CD gives, generates any additional lending capacity on the part of-
There'd be new money coming in that he wouldn't have to go buy a new collateral. He's already got the collateral, so he wouldn't have to spend that new-
Yeah, but he's taking that collateral out of the bank and moving it out outside the bank.
Okay.
So, it's not, it, it, it's the same, he's taking that, he gets $100 in, and if I'm saying this right, and Roy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, normally when you go to a bank and you buy a CD, the bank takes a portion of that investment and puts it in its reserve. So, and let's say the bank is at its reserves, or it needs to put the, let's say it puts the 30, the Fed requires a reserve, let's say it puts 30% of reserves, so it has $70 to go lend in the community. If he's over-reserved right now, then he can liquidate those extra assets and, and lend the money. If we give, if $100 is deposited, and he takes $125 out of his over-reserve, he's in the exact same, actually a little worse spot than, than before he got the money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Now, some states don't require 100% collateralization. Some states maybe only require 50%. In that case, yeah, it would be to the, the, the local governments, they're, it would generate, but South Carolina would require at least 100%.
For safety purposes.
Right, exactly, on that. So, I, I'm not sure. Plus, I believe that it will generate additional, he is correct in that we can, there are, there are forms out there, such, but then you start looking through what the Finance Officers Governing Association recommends on this, it will require extra work on the part of the city to monitor more work than is required on a bond portfolio. But if that, if you feel that that's, you know, it's the city council's decision on that, but it will require more work and require additional, you know, probably maybe a half a person or something to, I'm not sure what, to work on that. But I don't see that using the CD helps your local community by increasing the ability of local institutions to lend, to, to the local community.
Okay.
Anything else?
Again, you can see it's a complicated issue, and that's why we wanted to have a request for proposal, or in this case, it's really a request for services, that we're gonna be asking the various banks and institutions to give us what they feel meets those requirements. Before we come back to you with a final recommendation, again, we'll have Warner look at this and work through the process, 'cause this, as Reggie said, it's, this is a very serious thing. It's the citizens' money, and we want to make sure that two or three years from now we're protected no matter what happens. But on the same token, we do want to get more interest revenue coming in, and that's the whole purpose of this, is 'cause we feel we could get upwards of $300,000 in new money into the city budgets.
So, it's actually before the council is the new resolution to change the permitted investments from LGIP, include LGIP plus US government and agency obligations, as well as authorizing us to go forward with the RFP.
That's what I was gonna ask, so, if you're ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor. Did you finish the presentation?
I'm, I'm, I'm finished. I'm, it's a very complex item, and I did not wanna spend an hour of your time going on, so I wanted to cover it briefly and answer any questions that you have. I could talk for a lot longer on, on the second.
Thank you, we talked long enough.
And, and to our city, interim city manager's credit, he gave us very detailed information in our minutes package on, on this investment fund, so that was very helpful in terms of reading it in advance of your arrival, so.
I'll be curious to see how it turns out, 'cause about three or four years ago, I asked the same question, of why can't we invest in some outside entity instead of getting our .16% from the LGIP? And I was told, we tried that. I think it was you, Roger, that said, we tried that and the banks wouldn't even deal with us.
Yeah, we were trying something different than going to this longer term. We were just gonna go ahead with shorter term, and we couldn't get banks in the past to go ahead and really even give us a proposal back. So, we decided to take a whole different approach. And instead of having maybe $5 million, most of these investment firms, we think we got a lot of money here to invest at 25 million, most of them are talking about hundreds of millions of dollars when they're talking about investment. So, they consider us a small investment.
Right.
We think this is a big, large investment. So, we, we would like council's-
Do we need one motion or two motion, 'cause we're doing two things?
It's, it's a motion to approve a resolution.
That's the bottom, right here.
If you could just read what we have here, or something to that extent.
I move that, I move approval of the resolution for the investment policy and the request for a proposal to invest city funds.
Okay, very good. Second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
You have a second? Any discussion further? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor? Pass this unanimously.
Thank you, Warner.
Thank you, Roy, too. Item three is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to approve the sale of 1407 Aldrich Street Northeast. Mr. Ladue, please.
Yes, I'm gonna just read the title of this ordinance instead of going through it. It's an ordinance approving the sale of 1407 Aldrich Street Northeast, and this is to Charles Means. Charles Means has been an employee of the city for about six years. It's my understanding that he has come before council maybe once or twice prior to this to buy a house in Crawson Park. If you approve this tonight, this will be our second sale we've had in the last couple of months in Crawson Park. The sale is for $65,000 is what the appraised value is for the property. He is able to get a mortgage of $62,900, which is not the 65,000, but he has also agreed to have a certain amount deducted from his paycheck on a bi-weekly basis to make up the difference. So, for the next couple of years, there'll be money taken from his paycheck that'll make up the $2,100 difference, and so tonight we're asking you to approve on second reading the sale of 1407 Aldrich Street to Charles Mean for the appraised value of 65,000 and a city loan of 2,100 per the terms and conditions as set forth in the attached purchase and sale agreement.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion?
I, I make a motion that we approve the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to approve the sale of 1407 Aldrich Street Northeast.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good.
Is Mr. Means here tonight?
I believe he had to work late tonight, and he was hoping to be here by 8:30, but I, it's, obviously, it's, he is not. Emory's here, the real estate agent is here, and if you had any questions from that end of it.
I just have a question. Where will the money from this sale go?
It'll go back into account 112, which is the Crawson Park account. If for some reason we do not get the grant for the demolition of the seven homes that you approved a week ago on Monday, then we'll be using this money and the money that we received from the other home for the demolition.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Also, we'll be coming back to you probably in February. We are looking, the last two appraisals came in, in the 60, mid 60,000 range, and to talk to you about the prices we have on the sale of the other homes out there.
Okay.
We believe they need to be adjusted.
Very good. Okay, show of hands, please, all in favor? Pass this unanimously.
And I'd like to-
I'm sorry, Leslie, do you have something?
I was going to add that Charles Means has waited a long time for this house. He has been working and working with Security Federal Bank, treaty board, along with the real estate agent who's here, and Emory trying to make this happen. So, I am so happy for him, 'cause he is a man that was so determined, and then we have, we had people working with him to try to make this happen. So, you all should be applauded for what you're trying to do to help him to get into his own home, so thank you.
And, and I thank Debbie, I mean, Ms. Nix, because it was, I know that she, that she has been diligent, and Emory as well, and glad to see you selling some of those homes in Crawson Park. I know it hadn't been easy, but you hit the ground running, and your efforts are paying off, so we thank you so much for that. And I know Mr. Means is singing hallelujah that he can finally get in his house.
Okay, item four, second reading, public hearing of an ordinance to amend 2014-15 budget to establish a position of risk manager. Mr. Ladue, please.
Yes, again, I'll read this by title only. It's an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget to create the position of risk manager. We had a lengthy discussion on this at the last meeting, but just to kind of recap, we're currently paying an independent firm $17,000 to manage our various claims. The disturbing thing that I've seen from a trend is that the amount of general liability that we're paying every year, and the amount of workers' compensation liability every year has gone up tremendously over the last few years. If I look at just decreasing the general liability to a position halfway between our best year and where we're at today, and the same thing with the workers' compensation, we would be saving over $250,000. If we go down to the lowest mount, which we had in 2008, we'd be saving over $300,000. So, one, it takes the part of everybody within the city to create a atmosphere of safety, and it starts at the very top, and then it works its way on down. This particular individual, if you decide to allow us to advertise for this position, would at least initially be reporting to the city manager. And the reason for that is the department heads and then these employees underneath the department heads need to know that this is something that we're gonna have to work on day in and day out if we're gonna make a difference. When we, the, the way the state looks at insurance, they put an experience modifier, and an average rate for cities across the state would be 1. Currently, our general liability's at 1.63. That means we're paying 63% higher than the average city. We were down at .79%. That's over 100% increase that we currently have. Our workers' compensation is currently at .851. We're 70% higher than what we were just a few years ago, which was at .5. Again, the savings alone for this position will make up for it. It's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take some work on the part of everybody, but we feel like if you go along with our recommendation that long-term, there would be some tremendous financial gain by the city. But even more importantly, if we could go ahead and eliminate one major injury, someone hurting their back, someone, even more critically, if, if something happened where they passed away, we have an obligation to our employees, and this individual will help to make sure that our employees are safe. There's nothing, my biggest concern for me when I was city manager was having to go to some mother or father or a spouse and let them know that one of the employees, something happened. So, there's a dual means of what we're trying to have here, is one, save money, but also to save injuries. And so, we urge you to go ahead and consider on second reading the establishment of an ordinance for the position of risk manager. We did include, you did not get in the package, but it was asked over the weekend, and so you have the list of duties or the job classification for this individual that we gave you tonight that we'd be using when we go out for the advertisements, should you approve it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and discuss this item.
Okay. Second? Pass this, show of hands. Pass this unanimously.
I had, Mr. Ladue, if you'd pass these around, and Stuart, if you'd put the handout that I'm passing out up here. Mr. Ladue and I had several discussions about this. One of my concerns is we didn't have duties listed in the ordinance. And the way the ordinance is currently written, it doesn't say who this person reports to, and as we talked about before, at the first reading, it has to report at the top of the chain of the command, and then Mr. Ladue just said that. My concern is, that's one of the concerns I have. The other part that was in Mr. Ladue's cover letter, which is page 120, and it's my item I up here. The miscellaneous thing is the person of due doesn't really bother me, but one of the ways that we, that we get judged is what Mr. Ladue just said. I think that my proposal would be if we read item I up there, that we would actually have this as a part of the annual report we put out, because the money is in the, in the modifiers.
Yes.
That is not mentioned anywhere in the ordinance, or is it mentioned in the job description. That is not mentioned anywhere in the ordinance, or is it mentioned in the job description? And this, the money is in the modifiers. All the other stuff, if you do that properly, your modifiers will go down. But we have no way to judge whether we're doing good or bad. And we sure don't want this to become, you know, a clerical position. This is a professional position to save us literally, not only the money involved, but the personal injury involved that comes with that. So my proposal is to add, for discussion, is to add, it reports to the city manager or is designate, as Mr. Laduke had told me, and then we include item I. That's where the modifiers come in, and we chart that out, and we put it in the annual report that the city puts out to us, which has a lot of numbers and facts in it. So that's my proposal, and see if there was any discussion about it.
Every year, the municipal association comes to the city, gives this report on accidents, what we should be doing, more all changes. They still do that, correct, Stuart? Okay. And so we actually get a report from them that is probably more comprehensive, even more so than what you'd be looking for in the annual report, that council certainly could get a copy of.
With these three items, and in my experience in my industrial and commercial construction management, these are the three things we look at. And if you drive these towards zero, not only is the business going to stay in business, but also your contractors will stay in business, because these numbers will put a contractor out of business that, once they get much over 1/6 to 2, they won't stay in business.
That is correct.
And so we're at the outside edge of those numbers now.
At least on one of them.
So that'd be my proposal for the discussion.
And to answer Mr. Ebner's, I would have no problem. We typically do not put in the job description who that person reports to, but in this pure case, I could see some justification for that. Alicia, there she is. So she and I talked about it today, and I'm not even too sure if we have reporting on any, because it's pretty standard. If it's the planning director, then they're going to report to the city manager. If it's a planner, they're going to report to the planning director. But in this pure case, the risk manager is in a position that needs to be identified as to who they report to. And so, again, I believe that they need to at least initially report the city manager until they feel we have achieved what you have in item I to get that modifier down to the level that we want.
And I would gladly modify that to say are designate, but I think it's going to take, to get back to where we were, it's going to take usually on the average about three years, because they won't believe the numbers until you reproduce them for a couple of years.
You'll see the biggest benefit in year one, but then you're, it's cumulative as you go forward. So again, it's not going to happen overnight, but it is very achievable. When we started really pushing hard in the late '90s, early 2000s, we were at these high modifiers, and it took a lot of effort to get us to where we were in the late 2000s.
Well, I recall when I came on council, we had one person doing both this and the business license, and for some reason, we've gotten away from that. I think I mentioned it the last time, that it was very successful with whoever that person was. I just don't recall who it was, but...
It was Lex Kirkland.
Okay, well, Lex did a great job on that, and he, I recall, going to our employee luncheons and somebody getting a safety award for goodness, and someone getting a safety award because they needed to work a little harder on it.
Correct.
But it was a focus, and that focus has disappeared. And I'm not sure that, quite honestly, that hiring another person versus having someone who has demonstrated success doing the job before is needed. So I won't support it again tonight. I think we should be able to get by with the one person as we did in the past.
What educational background does this person require? A degree in business administration?
It's in here.
Well, I didn't see it. I've looked at it. What age is that?
It's the handout we gave you tonight.
The only thing I would have to say about it is, you know, a true risk manager, you know, is a professionally educated and certified individual, you know, they're quite expensive to hire, but they can make a profound difference in an organization culturally, economically, safety-wise, everything. Unfortunately, we're not in a position to be able to hire somebody like that, but one day, I hope we can. You know, that's what's known as an enterprise risk manager, that would look at everything, the top-down, bottom-up, left, right, and sideways. You know, this is a good start. We're not able to or ready for the full enterprise risk manager, but if you want to see bang for your butt, get one of those pros in here, and it would be transformative.
Let's remember one thing, too, and I think it's been said, Roger, I think you said We all, all of us employees, and anyone else that comes in, needs to help this situation. We have the eyes. We can have a lot of eyes out there with our folks working and see things as well. And we certainly don't want to have a tendency here to say, well, let's just, you know, we're not going to do anything, because we have a risk manager now. He can take care of that. Now, this is obvious thing that we all can do. And Reggie, you mentioned working, you know, your past work, and of course, with DuPont, and all of us have had some experience here. But we can use our eyes and ears to help the safety situation, too, as well.
I've got a question. Have we actually taken a look at what caused our numbers to go up, if you will?
I think...
I'm an old chief of safety, so, you know...
Well, you know the answer to that.
I know the answer to that.
It's in attention.
Well, but I mean, really, have we actually looked why the numbers are going up? I remember with you back in '09, '10, I think we were actually raking in money from all our, what is it, the insurance companies or whatever.
Workers' company.
Unemployment. And all of a sudden, you know, we're, you know, has anybody seen the transition change? Or whose job was it to see the transition change, you know, where the numbers are going up?
That's what a risk, you know, a professional risk manager will do, and hopefully, this person can do, too. They analyze, you know, they determine the reasons that the modifiers are increasing, that the number of claims, the severity and frequency of the claims are increasing. They look for patterns, they look for areas of improvement, things that we might could change the way we do it, or things we could altogether stop doing to avoid those risks, and ultimately try to get it back under control. But, I mean, there's sort of ebbs and flows, cyclical stuff in this. When you get your experience mod down to in the .7s, it doesn't take much in terms of claims to suddenly give it a rubber band effect and take it upward, because you're comparing a certain amount of claims versus a lower amount of premium. And so there's ebb and flow, there's up and downs with these things. I mean, this is rather extreme to go to 1.63, but nonetheless, you know, a good risk manager, and hopefully, this person will have the time to be able to do it, too, but they'll analyze those claims, look for the trends, and hopefully recommend ways to mitigate it.
And also to Councilman DeWare, and I understand what you're saying about how we do it before. We also had at that time two part-time business license inspectors, and we're going to eliminate one of those positions. So we're going down to, we have the savings from that. And again, we're eliminating that outside firm coming in here and spending the $17,000, which is Joe Bad Associates.
Depending on the rules, what do we need to do to just make a motion?
He's made a motion already.
Well, the other thing, I appreciate what you said, Mr. Mayor, but safety and insurance issues are driven from the top-down in any company.
That's true.
Whether it's a small or a business like you have or something. Even if one of your contractors gets hurt, it hurts your ratings when you go out and buy insurance to insurance your buildings. If it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I guess to Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to just say section four, I would propose that disposition report to the city manager or his designate. That gives the option for the future. And then my section, section five would be number I only. And you may need to change the words a little bit. I used some of my, what was in the write-up and the stuff I knew about the OSHA 300 log and so forth, because that's what counts.
Let me ask you this.
Yes.
Is it appropriate simply to amend the responsibilities and duties that Mr. Laduke has handed out tonight, or you want that in the ordinance?
Yes. My experience is a little bit lacking on some of these that we don't put in the ordinance. The rest of the stuff is, are mundane duties, that if you do those, you'll get the last one. But this is worth $300,000 to $500,000 a year as we sit here to the city. And how do we get it with a person? But it's a top-down-driven affair.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I think I've used the right legal terms here for the modifiers. Okay, that's my motion, sir.
Okay, all right. We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second? Okay. Any other discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously.
No.
No, no, no.
Sorry. Excuse me, Dick.
I don't agree.
Six to one. Okay. Item five, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to convey real property to Hollow Creek Preserve LLC. Laduke, please.
Yes, sir. Again, because we have to, I'm going to read it by its title to make our city attorney happy. This is an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to convey real property to Hollow Creek Preserve LLC. This was brought to us by Councilmember Ebner. He had been working with the citizens. At the very back of your packet on this, it gives a very good picture of what we have here. We have a 66-foot right-of-way for a road that we thought might go between these two properties, and then there was a 25-foot easement for a horse trail. Neither one of those are going to be built, and so by you giving up your rights to this, it then would allow those residents to work with Woodside and with others to go ahead and convey that property or split it between the two of them. So again, tonight, we're asking you on second reading to, and a public hearing, to authorize to convey this property to the Hollow Creek Preserve LLC, which is really Woodside.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? Not show of hands, please, all in favor? Pass this unanimously. Item six...
By the way, it puts that land back on the tax roll, too.
That's very good.
We need all we can get.
Item six, second reading, public hearing, and ordinance approving the amendment of a lease of space on the York Street Water Tower to New Singular Wireless PSC LLC. Mr. Laduke, please.
Yes, sir, Rob. You just read the ordinance, so I will not read it again. But what we have here is a few extra five-year leases on the water tank AT&amp;T. This is on York Street. Has increased their amount by around 3% every year. We have looked at it, and it currently seems like a fair rate. They're currently paying $15,525. The new lease would be for $17,853. You approve this at the December meeting. This is second reading of an amendment of a lease space on York Street Water Tower to New Singular Wireless PSC LLC.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I second.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, I've got one question. Are we officially changing our address to 135 Lawrence as opposed to 214 Park?
I'll ask Ms. Writeout for that answer.
Please type in.
What is our official address? Is it 135? Or, okay, it's not 135?
It's okay.
Did you get an answer to your question? I didn't want to interrupt, just to get an answer to your question.
Yeah, 235.
Mr. Mayor, when I looked at this, this will allow us to review this again in 15, not us, whoever else sits here.
You'll be here, Lesley.
No, I will not be here. In 15 years versus, I think the last time we reviewed this, what, was seven years ago? And whether a 15-year agreement is too long to stretch out? And my second question deals with Aiken Co-op and some of the other agreements that we have with some of our other services. Is this in line with what we normally do in terms of stretching out a lease for 15 years?
If I'm not mistaken, Lesley, I think the main reason the first lease was amended was simply because the company that owned the towers changed their name.
Okay.
I think it was a 15-year lease to begin with, and you passed that first 15-year lease. You were on board in it.
That long up in the city?
Two thousand.
Longer.
And you have to stay on this for the virus.
I will not stay till you're stressed. All right, question is. Call for the question.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for that. Show of hands, please. Pass this unanimously. Item seven, second reading, public hearing of the ordinance to increase the monthly garbage collection fee. Mr. Laduke, please.
Yes, currently, we are at $14 per month for residential garbage collection. This rate has stayed the same for seven or eight years. Back in 2007, 2008, it was our intention to start raising the rate up until we received enough funding to pay for the service. Under a user-fee system, your garbage, your water, your sewer, your storm drainage, whatever that utility is, should balance between the revenues that you receive versus the expenditures that are within that particular area. Our expenditures right now are in the mid-19 range, around 1950 to 1960, and obviously, we're falling short every year. When we discussed this as one of those budgetary items to determine where we need to seek additional revenue, this was one of the areas that council discussed, and instead of bringing this entirely from $14 up to the full amount that we eventually need, we decided to do that over an interim period of time with an increase of $3 now. And then we're going to come back to council in February with some other thoughts concerning solid waste. We're going to also talk about an enterprise fund, so it's a standalone fund for solid waste. And then depending on what council decides in February, then we will be looking in the new budget, probably making the adjustment to the full amount to pay for this service. So tonight, what we're asking, you had first reading and approval in December. This is second reading, approval to raise the fee for solid waste from $14 to $17 effective with the February 1 billing.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second for approval?
I move, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the $3 increase, moving the rates from $14 to $17.
I second.
Okay. Discussion? Any discussion?
Just to refresh my memory, did we agree on making it a enterprise fund or not?
We agreed that in the new budget process, that is what we're probably going to be doing. I'm going to bring back some more information to you in February, along with some other budgetary items to discuss, and based on that, we would more than likely go ahead and make this an enterprise fund. But again, I want to give you that further information before you make that decision. So we're not making that decision tonight.
Okay.
Let me just add that Councilman Ebner brought this and requested this to be on our agenda at a previous meeting, and it was a good move because we have a program that is not supporting itself with these garbage fees and the rates. Moving to 1975, which is a $5.75 increase, is a pretty big steep for taxpayers. And one of the reasons that I suggested that we move to a $3 rate at the last meeting and look at the budget, review that, and... and look at the budget, review that, and determine whether we need to increase that in the next year. And thankful the council supported that. So that's why we're moving in that direction. The motion is made.
Okay. Anything else? If not, show a hands, please, all in favor. Pass this unanimously. Item eight, second reading, public hearing of an ordinance to approve an inter-fund loan agreement and for the widening and improvements to University Parkway. Mr. Ladue, please.
Yes, sir. The next two ordinances that you have in front of you, both are dealing with the same subject, and this is University Parkway. When council received funding from the State Infrastructure Bank, or what we refer to as the CIB, it was originally in the amount of $3 million with $3 million hopefully coming from the county, and then the last $3 million coming from CIB, for a total of $9 million. The council looked at trying to add some additional funding for this project that although the initial estimate is at $9 million, we felt a little bit more comfortable with a little higher amount. But we also wanted to have some assurances from the county that they in turn were going to go ahead and fund their $3 million before we were ready to go ahead and restart this project up. So the first ordinance that you have here is basically stating that we would go ahead and borrow money from the capital project sales tax to move this project up and to have the money available to start work on it. Already, there's almost $250,000 that's been spent on the preliminary engineering. And we did receive a resolution from the county that they passed last month that they will be providing up to $3 million from their CPST funds for the improvement to University Parkway. In addition, there have approved money to give to North Augusta. That was one of the holdups was splitting this 13.5 million dollars that they had between North Augusta, Aiken, and projects that they were working on. In a corresponding move, at the Georgia-South Carolina Arts Meeting in December, that's the full body working together, they approved a new purpose and need statement for Hitchcock Parkway, which the funding from CIB was eliminated so that we could have more money to do this project. And one that you have later in the agenda on Dougherty and Whiskey Road, that's adding a second turn lane. This project would provide widening. It'll go to probably around a five-lane section from the traffic light that is at the entrance to USC Aiken and to the hospital, back to Richland Avenue. And then the last couple thousand feet would be some widening and some improvements with a new entrance that would be right opposite from Trolley Run Station. So the county has approved it, and we're asking you tonight to approve this ordinance. You had first reading in October, and this would be second reading in a public hearing of an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement for the University Parkway project.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in a second for approval?
Mr. Mayor, I recommend I move that we suspend the rules for discussion, please.
Okay. Show hand, please. Show hand.
Yes, if I can open with some comments. Mr. Ladue and I, and several council members as well, I've spoken with Mr. Tool, who has done the design. And obviously, when you're doing roadwork, there's a lot of liability involved. I think we should not forget now or in the future, this is a city-sponsored project. And our agreement with the SIB says that if it runs over anything over the total amount of money, it comes out of the city's pockets. Mr. Ladue has said that, well, if it gets too expensive, we can reduce some of the scope of work. So I think that's the first point I want to make. This is a city project. The other thing that we, Mr. Ladue and I talked about, and several others, I don't personally, and I think I have some engineering reasons why, the estimate we have may not include some key issues. One of the issues is Waters of the State, which is Corps of Engineer, a study that has to be done, which is probably 100, 200,000. But the biggest one is the stormwater going, if you will, towards out of town on the, on the University Parkway. I guess about five years ago, there was a detention pond that washed out from some old apartments up there. And that issue has never been resolved, and it's not a city issue because it's in the county and the state. That has not, that study has not been done, and that could be real expensive in a short period of time. The other part that I reviewed the contract, and I don't know if Mr. Ladue has read the contract yet, but the one we currently have with Mr. Tool is for the engineering and administration and inspection of the work. It is not to monitor, it doesn't supervise the contractor. And I read those words specifically out, and that's an important point. Somebody has to supervise the contractor. The agreement is what they call a short form. There's no directors and officers insured, there's no engineers, errors and omissions, and no bond. The limit on that contract is a straight $50,000. So to me, that's a little red flag on a $900,000 contract. The other part that was a little concerned to me is who's doing the inspection. It specifically states in there that we would use the city contracting cover letters and so forth. But there's no reference in the specification to use SCDOT standards. I know that the design says that. But we, eventually, the city has to get the SCDOT to approve this road. So that's one of my key concerns there, that we do that. The other part, I've worked with several organizations where the county has had resolutions to provide money to us before. My proposal, which I've talked to Mr. Ladue, I did talk to Mr. Holly, who is their current acting city attorney, about sharing the cost with the county as we go along. In other words, we have $3 million, they have $3 million. As we spend money, we divide the bill in half and send it to them, and we pay the other half. Right now, as Mr. Ladue stated, we've spent about $260,000. Well, send them a bill for $130 and see if they pay. So these are some of my concerns here. And my last item, which is the biggie, I think that the appropriate people from the city, including Mr. Tool, need to go sit down with SCDOT across the table from each other and go down Mr. Tool's scope of work and then say, okay, state, we'll just meet all of your qualifications. And whatever comes out of that discussion, it may be appropriate for us to have Mr. Tool do further investigation and design to eliminate some of these unknowns. So that's my concern, is, you know, reading the contract and being somewhat familiar with this type of work.
Let me just tag along with a comment regarding the county. And their resolution, to me, is a little confusing because of the wording. It says that they will give us up to $3 million. And what's confusing is when does their money come into play?
Exactly.
Does it come into play right away? In other words, as Reggie inferred, we take our $3 million, their $3 million, and when we go through that, we go to the CIB? Or do we go to the CIB after our $3 million? I mean, the flow of money on this is confusing, and we're talking big bucks. So I'd like to see that clarified. Because the way it's written here, it could be interpreted as we'll spend our $3 million, we'll spend all the CIB money, and then we'll go to the county. And this is a resolution, I assume that they're good for it. But then what happens if it's more than that? And CIB says if it's more than that, it's up to the city, but it should be up to the city and the county. So I guess I'm just concerned with the flow of money on this, and it's a large contract, and I'd like to have that a little more defined.
And I echo that 100%.
Very good point.
Well, based on Roger, the projections that you've given, that you were estimating about $9 million, based on the CIB money, a 4.6, $3 million from the county, up to $3 million, as Dick has said, $3 million of our funds, that is $10.6 million, which is a cushion. But there's a lot of question marks, as Reggie has mentioned. We don't have a design plan yet, and talking to Roger, we don't know what the actual cost will be until we get a design plan. And this ties in some with the Dougherty Road discussion, with the design plans already there. And we know what the estimate is going to be based on the design plans already being in. So a lot of question marks.
Go ahead, if there's any other comments. I would like to make a motion and a resolution, how to continue if I could, when everybody's finished.
I'd like to make a couple of comments back. I'm looking at the engineering contract that we currently have with Tool. And again, this has been suspended, we have stopped the engineering on it. And I would say that at some point, we'd need to go back to them and rediscover this engineering contract, similar to what you had talked about, because I was not involved with this at the very initial part.
Understand.
But there is in here $259,000 for construction management. $259,000, $240 for construction management. So they, and under construction management, it says a senior project manager will be out there four hours a month, and then weekly supervision of four hours per week, construction inspection. And they go in here, provided by, you know, an SCDOT certified inspector. And we'll provide a field inspector onsite every day for an average of eight hours per day. So they do intend to have someone onsite eight hours a day during this construction. So I believe that part has been answered. The biggest question that we have for a project like this or any other one, the $9 million that was originally estimated is typically just looking at, okay, we're going to go to five lanes, or we're going to go to three lanes, and a per cost, per thousand feet is going to be X amount. And right now, until we finish the final plans for construction, we will not know exactly what those final costs are going to be. So at that point in time, there will be some mile markers that we could bring back to council that will say, okay, well, we added this, we subtracted this, and we're on track, or we're starting to get ahead. Again, that's the conversation that should be happening on a regular basis between the city manager and council to keep you updated on what's happening with any of these major projects. We did add in over 15% higher when we went back to CIB, and that's where we got the 4.6 versus 3. Is that enough? Councilmember Ebner, I couldn't tell you one way or another until especially that storm drainage study has been completed. That is probably the key area. You know, I could go ahead and probably come fairly close on what it's going to cost to widen a road, the curb and gutter, any signalization. But when the big unknown is going to be your environmental study and your stormwater study. Environmental in that area, I don't think you're going to really come up with anything major. But stormwater, you may have to go ahead and provide a much larger detention pond below where the culvert is or where the pond is at the hospital. There's a large culvert goes underneath the road. And although you have a regional pond at the hospital, you may need to have a large pond where this failure occurred a few years ago. So you could have some off-site requirements of half a million, a million, a million and a half. And that's the big unknown. Or you may not have to have anything. You may find out that the additional water by widening this road is not going to be significant. I believe there's going to have to be some additional storm drainage. What that amount is, we don't know. And until you get the final bids, so in other words, you could be spending up to, let's say, a million dollars on design engineering and find out that the price is then coming at $12 million. At which point, council will have to decide, can we go back to CIB? Are they going to give us any more money? The agreement says they're not promising any more money. Is the county going to give us any more money? Or do we just say we're going to have to reduce the scope of the project? Again, you can't move forward until you measure the cost of what it's going to take to finish a project like this.
And we need then to pass this tonight? Can we defer this until we know what the costs are?
You will not know the cost until you finish your engineering, or at least go further within completing more engineering.
Okay. So can, should we do the engineering study and before we?
Again, if you want to approve that, all we're approving tonight is to spend over, up to that $3 million and approving the agreement with CIB. It's going to be sometime later this year before you, if you authorize engineering to start in the next 30 to 60 days, we're not going to know anything till late summer, early fall, on a little bit more knowledgeable what that storm drainage may be.
So again, I'm still a little.
So if you don't do anything tonight, we're not going to go any further with the project because we're not going to know anything more.
Well, we wouldn't go, I mean, other than doing the engineering, we wouldn't be going forward with other stuff anyway until we had the engineering done.
Correct.
Correct.
So then there isn't an urgency to pass the loan agreement, is there?
Well, right now, we are using money that we don't theoretically have. Because the CPST money has not come in yet for University Parkway.
The money we're using is to pay for the engineering work.
And so right now, you, as was stated, we've spent somewhere close to $260,000 for engineering, which we have never gone ahead and created a loan to go ahead and spend money.
So should we just approve whatever you think we need for the engineering study?
Well, the engineering study right now is for 800, including construction.
Yeah, 100% construction is all, it puts you at 860 or 870, whatever it is.
So if I'm looking at taking out construction, we're a little over 600,000. But that's doing final construction plans. Again, we're looking at environmental studies, stormwater studies. That's about midway. So of the total $868,000, 600,000 being in design, you'll probably have to spend another $150,000, $200,000 before we'll have a much better feeling on what the storm drainage may consist of.
Well, I'd be very comfortable changing your number on this item from $3 million to 800,000 until we get a better feel. This project might not get built.
It may not.
Right.
I understand.
And I don't think we want to commit a dime more than we need to.
And I'd like to somehow tie our funds to the county funds or something. I mean, the county needs to be an equal player in this and not be able to lag behind on paying their share of it. They're should be just as invested with each and every dollar that we are.
Well, they had a near majority vote to approve it, so I would accept that face value that they'll give us. But when we deal with money, I'd like to, I'd just like to clarify the wording because I'm confused with the "up to." That is confusing to me, and that's what I'd like to clarify.
Well, if you want to modify this, you could say up to $400,000 with the county providing matching money as we move forward with the engineering.
That's okay.
So if we provide $400,000, the county provides $400,000, that's $800,000.
I like that.
I'll go along with that. There's really four things to get the, get the, at least get a number that's reasonable. One, you need to have an SCDOT review because we're not on their best side right now. We need to do the.
It's much better.
Do the stormwater survey in detail, without a doubt, because that can go anywhere from.
A half million to several million.
Yeah. And then the other is the environmental survey. As far as I know, there's not been any manufacturing out there, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Right.
And then we need to do some core testing, where we're going to do that backfill that's, and put the wall in that's like 40 or 50 feet down. So those four items to be done in the 400,000, what you just said, would be very acceptable to do. And then if we want to squeeze the contract some, we can do that as necessary.
Can we move?
You need a motion for that? It seemed like we got this current.
Before you make the motion, I just wanted to ask the city manager. I think the CIB is looking for this agreement to be approved.
Well, they're looking, the next item we'll have is a CIB agreement. And we need to get a CIB agreement approved. They're tying this agreement to the Dougherty and Whiskey Road agreement.
I don't really have a problem with that other agreement.
The CIB agreement is looking at the bigger picture and more long-term. This, first of. This first agreement is just saying, we're willing to borrow up to four hundred thousand, well, it says three million, but we could modify and say up to four hundred thousand dollars with the county providing funds up to four hundred thousand dollars for the engineering.
Okay. All right, let me try and lighten the motion and-
One second. I, I don't mind that, but the four points that Reggie mentioned, at some point in the next several meetings that we have, council ought to approve those as well, because that's financially critical from what-
Well, it'll take four to six months probably to do that.
Right.
Right, we'll, we'll have to come back to you with, as we go forward with the engineering.
By limiting the money, it has to come back to council.
So those four things will be incorporated into that?
They're gonna be in this first motion. I'm gonna try to put the words in it, my friend from this, from the attorney section can help me. The second, I guess it's, I don't know if it's the second reading or however you wanna word it, that the loan would be four hundred thousand dollars to accomplish an SCDOT review with the design firm and the appropriate city officials. We would do the stormwater study, including an estimate of what it would take to do that work, because that's a big chunk of money. We would do the environmental survey and any remediation estimates, and then we would do some minimum test boring as the design firm would deem necessary.
And make, and- And then four hundred thousand with us.
And then the four hundred thousand from the county, however, I'll let Roger do those words.
I'll go ahead and send a letter to Clay Killian, telling him that we appreciate the three million, however, we would like to see this matching with the engineering.
And that would, and it's gonna be four to six months to get all this done, so.
Now, one of the things that, the fees with the engineering, fees outlined above do not include the following services: subsurface underground engineering, that's the borings, that's, that is extra to that eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, property appraisal, right-of-way acquisition, and construction field testing. So the, the one item that we'll be doing upfront within this area is the subsurface underground engineering.
Yeah, the testing, and then the other two items would be all engineering-related and estimate-related.
Which are supposed to be already within their engineering fees.
Okay, yes, I'm, I'm-
And I would second that motion.
That keeps us in our box.
In our second.
I can live with all that.
You have a second.
Okay, do we have a, a motion?
Yes, we did. Here's a motion and I second.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Show of hands, please, in favor, passes unanimously.
Thank you for your patience.
Very good. Thank you for your good information, Reggie. Item nine, second reading and public hearing of ordinance approving intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with the CIB for University Parkway.
Mr. Le Duke, please. Yes, the mayor has read the title for this. This is, again, a company ordinance that goes with university. This is allowing us to move forward, not only on this project, but the Doordie Road project. It's basically saying, as was stated earlier, that if the project goes over the ten point six million, then it is a city project. But again, there are gonna be certain milestones that council will be able to decide if the scope needs to change, or if necessary, go back to the county or the city or the state and ask for further funding if, if that was the case. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement for the University Parkway project with the State Infrastructure Bank.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in a second?
Don't move, Mr. Meyer.
Second, Mr. Meyer.
Okay, any, any other discussion?
Just, just a question, I mean, on page one of the agreement, there's a number of fifteen point four million. These are more, this is more than university, if I'm correct? This is combined university and, and Doordie Road? See it right at the very bottom?
Which page are you on?
Page one of the intergovernmental agreement, the second last paragraph, it says, in excess a hundred million and identified local and other contributions in the amount of fifteen point four million. I just, I think I know the answer.
This was the original, if I recall correctly, and we're going back many years, I think it was about two thousand and eight, we went to CIB with ten projects, and those ten projects added up to a hundred and one million dollars, and the fifteen point four was monies that we felt could come from other sources other than the state or the city.
So how does that one oh one figure into this one?
It doesn't, it's just, I'm, I'm not too sure why they even have that statement here.
That number does exist. It might go back to ninety-nine, but there's a letter that goes back at least ten to fifteen years that listed-
Yeah, okay, I, I remember that, but it's clarified later, so I'm withdrawing.
Jim's just, I think he's reciting the history of this whole-
Correct. That's what I think he was doing.
Call for the question.
Okay, show of hands, place all in favor, passes unanimously. General business, first reading of an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with CIB for Doordie Road and Whiskey Road intersection improvement.
This, this again is the complement to University Parkway. Originally, they were gonna award us nine hundred dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars to add a right turn lane in on Doordie Road at Whiskey. Currently, the traffic backs up for a block or more during certain times of the day, with the majority, probably eighty percent of those individuals wanting to turn right. So you'll have a second right turn lane at that location, or at the bowling alley, for those turning movements. We're able to get the vast majority of it within the right-of-way, we're not gonna have to take down any buildings, but the estimate for this project came in, not at nine hundred thousand dollars, but at one point one million dollars.
One point six.
One point six.
Well, no, this is the actual engineering estimate that we, we've seen. Plans have been completed, plans have been already approved by SCDOT. The only thing left is right-of-way acquisition and then going out for bids. So we're within a few months of that project actually being able to go out for bids. Because the estimate came in over one point one million, not knowing what the right-of-way cost were gonna be, we asked for one point six million, because they're paying for this a hundred percent. If everything goes well, and the bids come in and what we think they should, we may not even spend all one point six million. So that gives us a little bit of a cushion. But this is the same agreement that you saw for University Parkway, it's just now for Doordie Road, and would allow us to move forward on this project, because again, we're not looking for county's assistance, it's a hundred percent CIB funding. So we're asking you to approve this on first reading for the intergovernmental agreement for Doordie and Whiskey Road with CIB.
Okay, so move, Mr. Meyer.
Second, Mr. Meyer.
Okay, all right, discussion?
What's the timeline on this project?
Okay, the timeline would be if council approves this, second reading in January, then the intention would be going back to the engineer Rick Tool and ask them to proceed with right-of-way acquisition. That would take, could take as short as thirty days, it could take as long as sixty to ninety days, depending on how many individuals they have to work with. Once that's been completed, then we will be able to go out for bids for the project. Normally, you figure thirty to sixty days, so we're now looking at probably midsummer to start construction to, to late summer, early fall. And you could figure that's probably about a six to nine month construction phase.
Thanks.
Okay, nothing else? Show of hands, place all in favor, passes unanimously. Item two, first reading of an ordinance to rezone property at two forty-seven Marlborough Street by SE from light industrial to general business.
Yes, sir. The count, the mayor has read the ordinance that we have here by its title. This project, I wanna say it was in the mid-two thousands, a planning study was done that looked at the eastern side of Aiken, basically going out Richland Avenue and a few blocks to the north and south of Richland Avenue. And they felt that most of this area should be zoned general business. So over a period of time, there were a number of warehouses, and this was an industrial area. And the hope was that we could convert this industrial property to residential property, and we have an owner here who would go ahead and like to take this building at two forty-seven Marlborough Street and go from the light industrial to general business, which is not what the land plan that we had approved as, as a city. The planning commission looked at this at their December meeting, and after reviewing it, voted unanimously to deny approving the rezoning from light industrial to general business. So again, they denied it. Even though they denied it, whether they approve it or deny it, it still goes before city council for your vote. If you vote tonight on first reading to deny this, then we will not have a second reading. But if you approve it to go forward, then we will have a second reading on this property. So for your consideration night, this is first reading of an ordinance to rezone point five acres at two forty-seven Marlborough Street from light industrial to general business.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in seconds for approval, or not?
Mayor, first of all, let's, let's ask, yeah, okay, please.
Well, let's suspend, I move we suspend the rules and discuss it.
Well, she, I wanted to see if the owner was here.
Still have to, technically, we have to do that, that's okay.
I'm sorry, is there a problem?
No.
Okay.
Okay, my name's Avery McCullough, I currently live twenty-five Creekside Drive, Aiken, South Carolina, two nine eight oh three, and obviously, by me saying that you guys know I've done this before, and I'm not gonna take much of your time, I know there's a football game, and it has nothing to do with money, so this'll be quick. What you would just, I'm sorry, I think it was Le Duke is your last name?
Yes.
You had mentioned the comprehensive plan, and interesting, interestingly enough, if, how do I turn this one on?
Stuart, can you help her out?
He's technology-
I figured you guys didn't have a whole, oh, there we go.
She's technology savvy.
I'm trying. That's the building in question. This building has been here for at least seventy-five years, most likely longer. This is a historic building that I can't believe hasn't already been placed on the historic register yet. Not saying that's my goal right at the moment, but I think this building needs to be saved, something needs to be done with it. It's a gorgeous building, my goal is to make it an art gallery and an art studio. One of the only ways I can do that is by having general business. Light industrial does not allow me to do that in this building, without a special exception. I do have a closing date with my realtor at the end of this month, and we've already had an exception, and with the planning commission, obviously, they denied. And by hearing you guys say that the comprehensive plan does not go with the comprehensive plan, can, if you wouldn't mind, could I point out a few reasons why it does? If you could give me just a few moments? One of the only things in the comprehensive plan states, it's in here, but I haven't, their future use would be to take all the light industrial buildings and make them all residential, either detached, single-family detached. Well, this has been grandfathered in for quite some time, and I think a few people attempted to try to do this, but beyond that, if you wanna look at, and they are here, and if you wanna get a hold of the old Aiken comprehensive plan, let's think of, uh-
There's a, there's a zoom and plus and minus down there.
Oh, it's, oh, it's all down here? All right. How cool is that? So you can, I didn't even know that. So these are all parts, and you guys know this probably by heart, I can imagine. You can read along, I'm only gonna mention a few important ones. Structures and vacant land must be maintained both to enhance the appearance of Old Aiken and to encourage private investment sets for itself. Structures must be protected, steps should be taken to protect the attractiveness of this, of the area and improve those areas which are less appealing. And nobody, everybody knows that kinda side of town needs some TLC and have a reason why people want to move there. If you just keep adding residential properties there, there's no reason for them to move there. You're now just getting further and further away from the core of downtown Aiken that we kinda wanna bring to the eastern side, if my readings are correct. This is a really neat one. Encourage connectivity to College and Avenue to draw shoppers to the eastern part of Old Aiken, with particular emphasis on improving Williamsburg Street. Williamsburg Street is a few skips right my way, so that's kind of that way, and I agree, because all the downtown retail and artsy spaces are right on Lauren Street, which is fantastic, that's the core. But again, my building fortunately does fall under this plan as well, and that's that same place. This is more for the tax credits. Explore incentives for preservation of older homes and buildings, which contribute to the character of the area. And does this not look like Aiken? Okay, we are an equine community, this is what it is. We can bulldoze these down and keep building these residential areas that really don't, yeah, they contribute, but this is a building, why not restore it and renovate it and make it something worthwhile? And again, I'm gonna go fast. Goal number thirteen, buildings should be protected and enhanced, excuse me, preserve older buildings when possible. Character the area again, instead of tearing down historic homes and buildings, rebuilding where circumstances permit in order to preserve Old Aiken character and charm. Another way to do this is, this building was bought by the owner right now, nineteen ninety-eight, so if you see that time versus now, nothing has been done to it, it's been sitting there as a warehouse. If any of these options are not available to me as the buyer and her as the seller, this building would start to either collapse and just rot, because she'll just keep it there, or somebody's gonna tear it down, and that's not really eco-friendly, and I don't think we want that to happen. And it's about the arts, and I don't see a problem with an art gallery going in there, unless the city has another way for me to get this done, I would love some recommendations.
Andrea, did you understand why the planning commission disapproved it?
Because of the general business win, no, yes. If I fail as a business, what I could sell to and what it could become.
Yes.
Yes, I do understand that. And the point five acres of land that I, that it does sit on, not much can go in that point five acres of land regardless.
You'd be surprised. You understand that you have another option as well?
No, I-
Special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think the Planning Department?
Yes, yes, we have talked about that as well, yes.
I think that's on that agenda for their January meeting, depending on what we do tonight.
Correct. And the other thing to mention about the general business is, inside the, I guess the answer to what, I guess to you guys, the, what'd you call it? Their response to my proposal, along with that came this, and it said, no surrounding areas are zoned general business. Well, yes, they are, number one. Number two, there hasn't been a, any impact whatsoever on these general business areas with this area. So it's not like I'm putting a general business somewhere where it doesn't fit.
Well, it, it wouldn't-
Mixed use.
It wouldn't fit in that area, which is the reason why the planning commission denied it. It wouldn't fit for some of those types of businesses that could go in-
Right.
-to a general business category, and that's generally why they disapprove it. You very much want your art studio in Aiken, and it's an easier way to get it done, and the easy way to get it done, and Philip is the expert, with the special exception.
Well, that's an option, but this raises a couple of questions for me. Is it Andrea?
Yes.
Is that right? Andrea, first, right now, it's, what, it's light industrial zoning?
Yes.
And art studios not allowed in light industrial?
Right, well, a gallery, meaning a retail space.
Okay. Do we know, where is an art gallery or art studio, under what zoning is it allowed? Is it, is it included by right in any of the zoning classes?
The only by right, it's considered under, under other retail sales and services, that's where the, that's what that actual category is, along with that, so, excuse me, general business obviously gives you above and beyond opportunities to do whatever you'd like, I'm pretty sure, with the special exception. Again, I've got a closing date to meet that I'd like to have, and I don't wanna cut myself short in the future. You know, you kinda shoot a little bit higher up and-
The question, I mean, right now is-
Like office, mic?
This, this just points out to me one of the glaring problems with, with zoning and changing things, as far as with our conference plan, because right now, there's somebody, whether you buy it or somebody else owns it, has the right to use it as light industrial, which would be potentially a very highly intensive use. would be potentially a very highly intensive use that could negatively impact the surrounding properties. It grants a lot more, potentially offensive use of it than what you're planning to do. But by the same token, to go with general business, while you only plan to use it as a studio and a gallery, doing general business would open the door for it to be used in a lot of other ways. Is there any other classification for rezoning that we can use? Are you aware of anything, Roger? I mean, is there a limited professional or something else that...
Office is the only one that I've researched that allows it. And the usage is by far less than general business and even less than light industrial.
Now, we might want to ask Tommy Paradise to come up. That's, I just asked him out in the hallway if limited business could be potential, and that was no, obviously, you could put office space in there, but this is not what you would want as office space. So, but the BZA is going to...
Will the office allow the studio?
No, it would not.
No.
I'm just saying that this building could be office space.
Right. So if it were to be zoned as office use, it wouldn't allow the studio and gallery? Is that...
No, an office use would, and general business would. And I told you all, Roger, limited business would allow it by special exception.
Okay.
So does light industrial allow it by special exception. So to rezone it to that, it isn't getting there anything.
So again, we could rezone it as limited business, and that's a special exception that could be made that would allow what she is looking for without changing to general business.
So those are the only two possible categories for, well, the only automatic category would be general business, not office.
No, general business or office.
Or office, okay.
Yes, that's allowed by right.
Okay, and the shame is, is that, you know, is that essentially the grandfathering vision would allow somebody to use it against industrial use, noise and smells and manpower and hearing all that kind of stuff, and not necessarily if we rezone it some other way. I guess, you know, I don't know another way around it. Is there a way that we could consider adding art studios and galleries into more classifications in our zoning ordinance?
Sure, but you'd need to do a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, and in her timeframe that she's working on, that wouldn't allow that to happen.
When does Andrea need this done?
Because of closing.
She wants it done by the end of the month, I remember.
For closing. We've been working on this for quite some time.
And when's that BZA?
You have the, if you have a second reading on this, it's the 26th, and the BZA meeting is the following night, the 27th.
But if we don't have a second reading, it's still the 27th?
Yes, that'd be correct.
So the BZA would have the ability to grant a request?
In the current zoning, light industrial, retail sales and services, other retail sales and services are allowed by special exception. And we've got to run it on kind of a parallel track so that she's applied both for the rezoning and both for the special exception. So if one fails, she hasn't lost time on the other.
Well, I tell you what, I drove by that building, and I'd love to see an art gallery in there, and I love your vision. And that's in my field script, so I'd love to have you there.
What do we do with the office category? I'm still not clear.
This is what I was going to clear up, if you wouldn't mind. I think people are a little confused, and so are Doug and Yanni, the builders of the cottages on Collidin. If you look right here, where it says other retail sales and service, this is where the photography, gallery, studio will come in, art gallery, studio, and I will be able to sell artwork in that. If you look down, like you can't see this up here, if you follow office, that's this, all the way down, P equals permitted.
So office...
I am permitted by right to be in office. And this is something that just came up just recently, because I'm trying to rack our brains so we don't go over again and have to get another extension.
What else is permitted by right, Tommy, in office category? Do we run into any problem?
I can pull it up. I can even make it even easier for you guys for this.
Andrea, how long have you been working on this?
How long?
Yes.
Twenty, yeah. Twenty-four seven for...
Now, how many months?
I think, my realtor probably know, very beginning of October. And in the beginning, we didn't think that we were going to need a rezone, because we didn't think that an art gallery was any sort of a problem. But we found out it was real fast.
The property found the property, decided he wanted to buy it, and we talked with Ann Barber, and it became...
And you can look, I did this, I kind of, I dummy-proofed it, just, I did it color-coded, so the public could also see it and read it a lot easier than the original zoning graph. If you look at general business, everything on either one side is permitted, the other side is not. Can you see? I don't know if it's hard to see, maybe I can zoom in for you guys. And actually, by me gaining office, I lose a lot, meaning if I did want to sell, I lose a lot of any sort of, what'd you say? I don't know. Yeah, and, but that's okay. And I'm also here to make some friends with the next-door neighbors, cottages on Collidin. Their biggest worry was the same thing, and they're not here today. Is any, is Doug and Yanni in here? That's interesting. And that was their worry, was the general business, that what it could become next to their buildings that haven't been built yet. So if you keep looking, general business, office is to the left, can't put a hotel on it. And again, there's a lot of things with five, half an acre, you can't really do anyways. Funeral home can't go on it, department store, grocery store can't, liquor store, nightclub or bar, because I'm pretty sure a lot of people are worried about that. I'm being facetious here. Shopping center, obviously, you can't. All the way down to what it matters for me is right here. This is where I fall under. Just because we don't have other retail sales and service.
Okay.
Just because there isn't a zoning category for art or artisans or crafters, anything like that. And that is what we, the planning commission and the zoning, we've agreed upon that that's what, what I want to do, that is the category. It's kind of hard to have to fit yourself into a category that it's not in there, so...
Mr. Mayor, a couple of, probably for Mr. Paradise, when did this zoning take effect? What year roughly? Was it the 80s or 70s? I'm getting into the grandfather situation here to see how far back all this goes. That building is, it's probably more like 35 to 45 years old. There's a railroad bit to...
Older, older.
Older.
Mr. Ed, I really didn't look into it. As long as I can remember, that area in there has been zoned light industrial. So, you know, that's...
Now, the, now, it says you'd have to get a permit for retail sales and services. If that was a feed store, and there's a railroad track that unloaded boxcars of feed, somebody, I can guarantee you, the farmer 40 years ago, he backed up to that door, loaded up, and took his billfold out and paid for it.
Right.
Yes.
And so I guess, you know, maybe she needs to cut up a few frames in there for her pictures to be a manufacturing base. I think we need to, is, does this weigh into it? And I'm getting a little facetious there, but getting down, does the grandfathering clause play into any of these old buildings, or how do we treat that?
Well, if there was retail sales and services that went on there years ago, once it ceased for a year, granddaddy, the grandfather provisions went away.
After a year?
After a year, yes.
That's true on any zoning.
Yes, sir.
But it's still zoned light industrial.
But it's still zoned light industrial.
Buy it and use it for industrial purposes right now.
Correct.
All right, so if she goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, they have a precedent that that building was used for retail sales and services. I don't think they could deny that. We could probably find somebody in this community that bought something there. I mean, it's not that long ago.
Yes, sir. Probably can.
But I'm trying to help build a case here. What is the right way to go, and why would the BZA not approve it?
The problem with going to the BZA is they have a very narrow criteria by which they'll have to judge it. And it's essentially, does it comply with the conference of plan? And if it doesn't, you know, is it, why doesn't it? Is it because of some conditions beyond the buyer or the owner's control? And that's not really the case here. It doesn't comply because we just all of a sudden changed the intended zoning for it. But, you know, as long as that building doesn't get torn down, somebody could, you know, come along and buy it and use it for industrial use. Of course, her activity will be less intensive, less of an impact on the neighborhood than in the potential industrial use would, as long as she keeps it to something like, that would fall into the office zoning classification. And general business might be too broad. It might give her the option of doing a bar or something, which would be...
I understand that. That's why I was taking the other approach.
Is the goal to get to a light business and special exception of that? Is that the goal?
Well, the goal is to get the art studio built.
Right. It's already, for her, for to get her to the building.
Without having to do the special exception, because their criteria makes it hard for
them to grant that in this case, the way they have to go through that process.
Well, let's rezone it to office, then.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Is there any negative perspective from planning on if we rezone it to office?
I don't believe so.
Nope, let's do that. That's the way to get it done.
Andrea, is that, is that...
No, he's satisfactory. Perfect word. Yes.
Then I move, I'd like to make a motion, if I've got, that we, regarding this property at 247 Marlboro Street Southeast, that we, on first reading, that we...
Rezone.
Rezone it to office use, from light industrial to office instead of general business.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Not? Show of hands, please, in favor.
You got to come back one more time, Andrea.
I know, I understand, I understand.
Andrea, did you bring all of these people with you? Boy, that's a lot of love right there.
And that's only some of them. Wait till the next...
Wait till the next one.
That's a lot of support already for what you're doing, so that's a good deal.
Okay, very good.
Very good. Welcome to the business community. And more tax base, by the way.
Amen.
Y'all take care.
You can stay.
Football game.
Eat and run, eat and run.
Pizza's right out the window.
Who you yelling for? Who you yelling for, for the game?
Ohio.
Ducks, Ohio Buckeyes.
Okay, all right, let's move forward here. Item three, first reading of an ordinance to establish the position of Hall of Fame Museum Coordinator. Mr. Le Duke, please.
I'm going to read this by its title. It's an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget to create the position of thoroughbred Hall of Fame Museum Coordinator. At the last meeting, we had this on the agenda. Council asked that we move it until we had a chance to better define this position. We're talking about a 20-hour per week position, plus or minus, some weeks will be more, some weeks will be less. And as everybody knows, Lisa Hall is planning on retiring sometime, probably in February, although I thought she said that she might wait till May or June. No, that's, I didn't think that. Just wanted to see. So this would be opening up so that she could go ahead and be a part-time employee, working for the Parks and Recreation and Tourism, and continue what we've been doing at the Hall of Fame. But this should also give her the opportunity to make some changes that she's always dreamed about making over there at that facility. So we would like council's permission to create this position. Once it's created and approved by council, then we could go ahead and look at seeing who might be available to fill that position, that would have those qualities in mind. And so, again, we're asking to do this tonight, tonight's meeting, first reading.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second?
I so moved.
Okay, in discussion.
Second, Mr. Mayor. Whoever moved it, have a second.
Okay, show of hands? Passes unanimously. All right. Item four, first reading of ordinance to approve interfund loan agreement and note for sewer improvement repairs on Valley Green Drive and Highland Park Drive. Mr. Le Duke, please.
Yes, as council knows, we get every three months a check from the county that money comes from the once-in-sales tax. Our last check that we received was in November. We do not have enough money currently in reserves under the CPST III to fund this project. So what we're asking to do is to allow us to borrow money from the city's general fund equipment replacement to go ahead with this project. So for your consideration tonight, this is first reading, and an interfund loan agreement and note for the repair replacement sanitary sewer line at Valley Green Drive and Highland Park Drive.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second for approval?
Second, sir.
Okay, discussion? If not, show of hands, please, in favor. Passes unanimously. Item five, resolution to approve a curb cut at 181 Augusta Road.
Yes, sir. This property annexed into the city in the fall of this year. We had all kind of questioned, why were they doing this? They have come before us and asked that we would not grant them a curb cut, because we can't do that, only SE DOT could do that, but asking us to go ahead and state that we would write a letter saying that we would have no objections to having a curb cut. The planning department has looked at this, and if this, if they would have annexed with the city initially, so in other words, if this project would have come in, said, we want to annex to you, we would have looked at what would we have required or not required. Any property that is in this area would have a right turn in, right turn out. You would not let traffic from that gas station turn left and head north onto the Hitchcock Parkway. So they have come to us, the planning commission reviewed this at their December meeting and recommended on a five-to-one vote to allow a curb cut, allowing a right turn in and right turn out only onto Hitchcock Parkway with a dual driveway shown in Exhibit C. So for your consideration, this is approval of a resolution to approve the curb cut onto which Hitchcock Parkway. Again, you, you're not approving it. All you're doing would be allowing the city manager then to write a letter saying that we have no objection to that being made. And they would then see if SE DOT would even allow it.
Okay, all right.
Can I move that we suspend the rules and discuss it?
Sure.
Take public input?
Certainly, okay. Show of hands, please, everybody. Passes unanimously.
We got public input, I think.
Okay. Yes, sir. Bob?
He was asking if I had a PowerPoint. I said, a little one. Trust me. Mr. Mayor and members of city council, thanks for this time. I didn't really intend for that to come up quite yet, but, let's see, somebody must have taken the remote with them. You better send the police. Somebody has stolen the remote, but...
Wait, wait a minute.
Oh, oh, it's an employee. It's worse than I thought. Just disregard this for a moment. Let me just speak to you. For the next few minutes, I'd like to ask you to keep two questions in your mind. First of all, is this proposal consistent with city council's latest stated version for the future of Hitchcock Parkway? Is it consistent with city council's latest stated version of the future of Hitchcock Parkway? Question number one. Question number two, overall, from an overall perspective, does it make sense? Does it pass the ho-ho test? This, as far as I know, is the latest stated version of city council's vision for the future of Hitchcock Parkway. And this is the new purpose in need that was approved by the full arts policy... And this is the, the new purpose in need that was approved by the full Arts Policy Committee on December 17th. And I've highlighted the crucial objectives that are stated in this, and they are improved traffic flow and improved safety. And then down below is safety again with respect to pedestrians and cyclists. So, those are the two key objectives that I take away from this statement from city council, improved traffic flow and improved safety. I went out the other day and I took some pictures of the site. It was a cloudy day, as they all seem to be recently. This is the site. That is the convenience store and the pumps. This is Hitchcock Parkway. And this is, this is Route 421, which is just off the screen here. And you'll see over here in the left-hand side, some kind of light objects. In case you're not familiar with them, those are barriers that, that were erected by SE DOT as sort of the final solution to prevent people from exiting this location directly onto Hitchcock Parkway. They tried several other measures and they didn't work, so finally, they put these barriers and, and constructed an earthen berm to prevent this being a direct access. Right now, the access comes off of 421, which you'll see in a minute. This is another view, again, 421, these are the signals at the intersection of 421 and Hitchcock Parkway, a rather busy intersection. And right off over in here are those barriers and the earthen berm again. This is the current entrance to that facility. This is off of Route 421. Hitchcock Parkway is over here, and those are the barriers again. So, one thing that would likely occur if, if those barriers were to be removed and there was actually a authorized access provided, this would be a nice cut-through for people wanting to get from 421 over to Hitchcock Parkway and avoid the traffic signal. And just avoid that intersection completely. Not a good situation, I don't think. This is a close-up of the barriers. Maybe my eyes are failing me again, but that's the traffic signal. This is Route 421. Now, you'll notice how close these are to that intersection. If you read carefully what the planning staff wrote, they, they warn about that, and they say they believe that these would be in violation of the design requirements at this point, but that has yet to be determined. This is the right turn lane off of 421 going east on Hitchcock Parkway. And if you were standing there, you would realize that, that there's an intersection between this access point and that right turn lane. So, you have people making right turns that are going to be trying to occupy the same space as people coming out of that access point. That's one problem. Of course, the other problem is it's very close to this busy intersection. This is another close-up of the barriers, again, showing you how close they are to the intersection and actually coinciding with this right turn lane off of 421. Barriers again, and the proximity to 421 and that right turn lane. Now, one of the things that I'll, I'll elaborate a bit on in just a moment, this is a photograph of the Huntsman Shell Station, which you probably are likely familiar with. This is Huntsman Drive, and this is Hitchcock Parkway. The point about this is, if this is such a great idea for this station down at the intersection of 421, surely, the owners of Huntsman Shell, being astute business people, would say, "Hey, this would be a great benefit for us, too. We want our access point directly off of Hitchcock Parkway." Of course, right now, the access similar to 421 is to go on Huntsman Drive and turn So, what's, what can one observe and conclude from this information? First of all, if you read the letter that came from N-Mark requesting this action, they attribute the fact that that station has been closed, they attribute that to poor access and circulation, resulting from the fact that they don't have access directly onto Hitchcock Parkway. And two observations came immediately to mind to me, and that is, there's an Exxon station a quarter of a mile away from the station we're talking about, which is closed. They had wonderful access, both from Hitchcock Parkway and US-1. What more can you ask for? There's also a closed Kent's Corner Station at the other end of Hitchcock Parkway, the east end of Hitchcock Parkway. It also had great access off of Silver Bluff Road and Pine Lodge Road. Again, what more can you ask for? So, I suggest a conclusion that could be taken from this is perhaps the problem is not with access, the problems lie elsewhere in terms of this business. And if this claim is valid, that there's poor access and circulation as the result of a failing business, how is it that Huntsman Shell, which I showed you the picture of earlier, two miles away, has been at that location for decades? It was here when I relocated 25 years ago, and it was, it was not new at that point. So, I don't know, 35, 40 years it's been there? And they're continuously in business. They are in the same situation as far as access as, as N-Mark is, and is coming to you, asking for this support. And as I mentioned before, secondly, if this claim is valid, I would think you can expect to hear from the Huntsman Shell owner, who's going to realize all of a sudden that if I, if I just had this access directly on Hitchcock Parkway, I'd be making a lot more money. So, it'd be natural for a smart business person to come to you with that request. So, where does it end? More observations and conclusions. When Hitchcock Parkway right-of-way was obtained, the property owner at that time, at that intersection, 421 Hitchcock Parkway, they were compensated by DOT for accepting this access prohibition. So, that owner, and of course, that's been passed along through other owners over the years, I presume, that first owner was paid to accept that restriction. The owner of this facility, Triple H, now N-Mark wants to buy out Triple H's ownership, they went ahead and built that facility without SE DOT approval. Surely, they knew it was required, so they built the facility, and now they want to be made whole, or, or they are alleging that they can be made whole if you'll just grant this to them, or if SE DOT will grant it to them. So, the question, one question would be, why should HP users' safety and travel time be negatively impacted because of an apparently poor business decision? We have these facilities closing on the, on the west end of Hitchcock Parkway, on the east end of Hitchcock Parkway, both of which had wonderful access. We have a facility in the middle of Hitchcock Parkway at Huntsman Drive that's prospered all these years without that access. Now, there is, this is an important point, I think, one of the most important, there is no assurance that the business will succeed with HP direct access. In fact, I think there's a great deal of evidence that it won't succeed. I hoping, you know, I would certainly hope it would, I wouldn't wish that failure on them, but I think the evidence is there to say it probably won't succeed. So, what do we conclude from that? The traveling public and taxpayers could well be left with a compromised roadway in terms of safety and smooth flowing traffic and a closed business to boot. So, let's get back to that first page that I, that I put up on the screen, which was city council's latest statement of their vision for the future of Hitchcock Parkway, and what were the objectives contained in that statement? The first one was improved traffic flow. Does this proposal help meet that objective? I think the answer is clearly no. The second objective in that statement was, does, does granting this access or giving support to the granting of that access by city council, does that improve safety on Hitchcock Parkway? Absolutely not. So, my conclusion from all of this is that the proposed direct access to Hitchcock Parkway violates common sense safety design criteria for close proximity to busy intersection, and it will inhibit HP traffic flow. Can I answer any questions or address any comments?
I think that's a very good analysis of the situation, as far as I am personally. I mean, I drive that all the time, too, and I, from the first time I saw that, I said, "I didn't think it would be a good idea." And I think it, I think certainly doesn't, those two things, I don't think it helps either one of them.
Well, I, I have other examples to give to you, and I could go either direction on this one. You have the Walmart. There's a BP station on the corner where there's ingress on University Parkway, there's ingress on Richardson Avenue. And then you have on the south side of town, you have, you have a, a station right across from McDonald's on, I'm trying to think of the name of the street here, Pine Lodge Road. There's ingress and egress on pine grass and whiskey. So, it depends on what you, you say in terms of accident-prone traffic and those kinds of things. And I'm a proponent to see business successful. You're saying that this impacts business in no way, that they're gonna, it depends on the management, I'm, I'm assuming whether they fail or not. But I, I, as you, as you talked, I wondered about the tax base and what can we do to ensure that businesses have every opportunity to succeed, and not my personal desire personally, to see that there's only one ingress and egress to that, that location. I do recall something of the sort with us discussing this regarding the bypass possibly widening and holding off with an ingress egress on that, at that location. I don't remember whether that was a determining factor in terms of only having one location for DOT to have an ingress egress where it is right now. So, there are mixed feelings there.
Do we have somebody from Triple...
Can I address...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, well, one of the reasons that Hitchcock Parkway works as well as it does now is because it is designated as a controlled slash limited access roadway. And any additional access points have to be approved by the Secretary of SE DOT. So, it's a high-level question. So, so adding traffic signals, adding anything that inhibits the flow of traffic is going to be detrimental to the capacity of that roadway. And again, I think the evidence, at least the evidence I've been able to collect, says that access is likely, I can't prove it definitively, but it's likely not a contributing factor to the failure of that business. We had failures a quarter of a mile away of a similar facility that, as I said, had the best access you could expect, and on the other end of Hitchcock Parkway, the same thing occurred.
Those didn't, those, just for the record, those two businesses didn't fail. Those, those sold to a different owner who has not chosen to operate.
Well, they're closed, I should say.
They're closed. But they're not closed because of failure of access. They're closed because they were sold, and the new owners decided not to continue them as a gas station. They removed the tanks and everything, so...
But, but, yeah, right. Obviously, if it were a money-making proposition, they probably would continue it, but that's, that's debatable.
I can assure you, the people that bought them are a money-making proposition, and they, but you're right, it, it could be a business-related decision, but that's why they're closed, I think.
So, okay. But, but, you know, this, this controlled limited access is really key. And if Hitchcock Parkway is opened up to multiple additional access points, all bets are off with respect to the capacity of that roadway.
It can't be, Bob. There's only a certain number.
Right.
And I think there's, what, is there just one left?
Right.
No, 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 well, sorry, I, I've inquired with DOT about this. There are no more now. And as, as I said earlier, any additional ones have to be approved by the Secretary of Transportation.
Well, they always had to approve them anyway, I think, but if there's none left, any issues, move, let's move on.
Well, no, no, but I mean, this, this owner can appeal again and ask for an access point, and it'll go to the Secretary of Transportation if it gets to that level, and they'll make a decision.
Well, as Councilwoman Price mentioned, and it's in our packet, DOT is not going to do anything with this until they finish the design of, of the, the new Parkway. They've already said that. So, I, I'm, I'm almost upset at trying to be used by the developer to, to help them with their request, but it, it won't make any difference. I, I hope that DOT does nothing until they decide what the road's gonna look like. And, and I know that there's gonna be, I think I've been told anyway, that there's gonna be a five-foot wide path on both sides that's gonna take care of bicycles and, and breakdowns and so forth, so I, I doubt very much there'll be room for them to get in.
And, and, and my only reason for being here is just to urge city council, and try to persuade city council not to endorse this idea. I just think it sets a bad precedent, and it's, and, and granted, there are all kinds of design questions that have yet to be answered about Hitchcock Parkway, as, as you observed. But I, I just suggest Hitch, that the city council should not be endorsing this idea, so...
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Did, did you want to say anything?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I forgot to say my name, I guess, too.
Bob.
Yeah.
We all know you.
We know where you live.
Well, I'll say my name. I'm Deanna Carroll, and I have represented concerned citizens in the discussions and disputes over how Hitchcock Parkway should be or should not be modified in the future. And I'm, I mean, I've been very impressed with what the city has done in embracing a sensible approach to only making and suggesting modifications to Hitchcock Parkway that hopefully are the ones we really need, and you moved away from the superhighway that we, we so much feared when I first came to talk to, to talk to you about this process. And so, I'll be very brief, but I would only say that encouraging sort of an ad hoc, case-by-case, single situation recommendation about how to manage transportation is letting the tail wag the dog. We're going through a planning process right now. There was an application for an encroachment permit in this exact location before, and it was denied. It was denied because they were in a transportation, the transportation planning process. They're in it then, they're in it now, but it's underway, it's going, we just saw, the purpose and need has been recently changed, and we can expect a plan in the foreseeable future. Don't set the plan based on one service station's needs. There needs to be a broader planning process, and I understand, and we heard an acknowledgement here, that DOT is not going to plan that way, but it really, it really would not be sensible planning from the city to encourage planning that way. And to me, writing a letter like this is letting the tail wag the dog, or encouraging the tail to wag the dog. So, let's see this through. DOT will make the appropriate decision at the appropriate time. Don't encourage it one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Do we have any representatives from Triple H Development?
I think maybe we do.
I'm Doug Carroll with N-Mark, actually. Triple H is, is not here tonight. Elise Adams, I don't believe, I don't believe Joe's here. I, I wanted to address a couple of the points that were mentioned and spoken as fact, and I think the council addressed it. Kent's Corner was indeed sold to Circle K. That, that's what happened there, that's why they're shut down. They've shuttered a number of locations throughout the state. They've bought a handful of locations. The cut-through argument, certainly valid, and the rest of the presentation was fabulous, although against, against what I want to do, but it was a good presentation, and I, you know, hats off to you. The cut-through argument could be used on any corner lot, anywhere that has double access points. So, yeah, you may have a rogue citizen every once in a while that does that, but they could do that anywhere throughout the city of Aiken, or, or anywhere for that matter. I can't speak to the payment, if any payment was actually acquired by Triple H when they bought the property, and DOT... bought the property, and DOT told them there was, they were not gonna be able to, to have the access point. I can't address that because, quite frankly, I'm just not privy to that. What I wanted to speak to the council about specifically was, we would love to open another location here, we've opened a couple here recently, in Aiken County, we've opened four, and we've all, they've been acquisitions of, of this company, Triple H Development. Formerly Palmetto Express is, is the name of the company. Without this access point, we will not move forward with the, the transaction, and the station will remain closed. It did close sometime late last year, and it was for a variety of reasons, but lack of business is one of them, and the reason there's a lack of business is because you can only get in there one way, there's only one access point. In retail business, specifically in convenience, it is a convenience store, it is impulse, and it's typically not a planned route, and so, you've got to be available, multiple-access points, ingress egress is critical to the development of convenience stores, to development of other types of quick-service restaurants and whatnot in the retail realm. So, to not leave a property sitting there that's now in the city of Aiken, vacant, generating no tax base, when you have the opportunity for a company that could make it a vibrant location, more vibrant than it ever was, quite frankly, because we know how to run and operate the convenience stores, and have been doing it for 51 years successfully, it would be a shame to leave that property underutilized and potentially vacant for an extended period of time, certainly when we walk away from it. So, I, I don't wanna try to continue to pitch, all the information's been provided to the council, but I would like to answer questions, if there are specific questions from you or anyone in the office.
How is, how is your, you have one business on the east side, how is that business doing in terms of?
So, we have one on Edgefield Highway, and, and it's doing, it's doing well. Charleston Highway location on the south side of town is doing much better. That is a very busy location for us. One of the comments was, you know, they don't wanna add any more traffic signals, and, and we're, we're certainly not proposing to add a traffic signal, there already is a traffic signal at that intersection. When you've got a, an four-way intersection like that, and there's a light, and then there's a, a access point on the other side of the light, we call that far corner, okay? Far corner access, you drive any location, any, any roads up and down the city of Aiken or, or anywhere else, you're gonna see an access point there. So, there is controlled traffic flow by the stoplight, there is a DSO lane in place, there is a yield sign at the, at the, coming off of Augusta Highway to go south on Hitchcock Parkway. There are measures already in place to make this a, a safe transition for customers. We backed off our position asking for a full, full access point, right in, right out, left in, left out, because we knew that there would be an issue with safety. All we're asking for is a right in, right out, and primarily because DOT most likely will put a median down that road at some point. So, a full access is gonna do us no good anyway.
Now, DOT can grant this or not grant it regardless of what we say, is that right?
That's correct.
So, whether we write such a letter or not, you still have an application for DOT to request it?
Absolutely. Yeah, my understanding, and certainly y'all are much closer to the, the business of the city than I am, 'cause I'm, I'm out of Savannah, but my understanding was there were no funds for Hitchcock Parkway, and the project had somewhat been sidetracked. Is that not accurate?
We, we have some funds, we're gonna do it a different way, we're not gonna have the widened, widened lanes, you know, the extra lanes and that kind of thing. But still, we have a lot of traffic on, on that road.
True.
And in the future, it's, it's gonna get, get more.
Well, you know, to address that, it's already set up somewhat as limited access, there are only a certain number of stoplights along the Parkway, long stretches without any kind of intersections or anything. Because of the grade and whatnot, I don't expect that that would ever change. So, it's already limited access, and there's only, again, so many intersections where anything could even be proposed in the future. So, setting precedent or not, it's limited simply by the geography.
Doug, what?
Not, not to revisit this, but.
Excuse me, go ahead, Les.
You had a population, the reason that we're in this position with Hitchcock Parkway is you had a large contingency of businesses that supported the widening, you have citizens that did not support it, and so, and the funding, what, the, the total funding, the shortage of $8 million was an issue as well. So, given all those factors, that's one of the reasons why the, the Hitchcock Parkway did not move forward with the widening.
It, it will be widened, but not as it was originally designed.
Doug, do you have any idea why SC DOT denied this before?
My understanding, and again, this was coming in to the game late, we started the acquisition process in, I believe, March of last year, so this had happened a couple of years prior. But, my general understanding is, they came to the DOT and asked for the, the full access at one point, and were denied based on the fact that they were in the planning process of that road, and it was imminent, it was an imminent project. You know, DOT projects, I'm sure y'all are aware, they take, they can take quite some time, so, even with the planning process, this could be, this could be four or five years down the road before anything ever happens.
What Mr. Walsh's letter says, speaking of that, was that it couldn't be approved at this time, this was 2012, but that, I copy this letter, he's asking Mr. Gant to ensure that the request is reconsidered during the design of the upcoming project referring to the widening process, so it was apparently not now but maybe later type answer.
And because it stalled out here recently, and although it sounds like it might be taking a different avenue, but since the project has stalled out, you know, we would have to keep the, the property under contract indefinitely, or we'd have to close on the property and try to open the business and operate it as it is, which we're not prepared to do. So, that's why we're trying to make this decision.
So, so your position is, you are gonna walk away because you can't have the second ingress egress? We're losing an opportunity for a business to go there.
Yes, ma'am, we, we need the best access, and.
Y'all have any plans for annexation in the city?
It's already annexed.
This is in the city limits?
Yeah, it's been annexed, yeah.
I thought I'd read, maybe I misread it.
Well, let's get back to these two things here, whether or not you agree with these.
Does it improve, does it improve traffic flow on Hitchcock Parkway?
Yeah.
I, I, I can't say that it does improve traffic flow, but I can say it's no different than someone taking a right that doesn't have to come to a stop off of Augusta Highway to then go 421, to, to then go south. So, it, it's, it's a matter of people using common sense and a traffic signal operating and being timed and working with DOT to get those, those timings in place. Does it improve safety? By being right in, right out, yes. If we were asking for a full break, I could certainly see the case where you could end up with a potential T-bone intersection.
And we'll all have to agree or disagree with, with, with that, and, you know, think what we, ourselves, what we think. But I, I definitely don't think it improves the flow or the safety. You're just putting another opening there, and I can see, I can see cars coming this way, having to stop, somebody coming out, and also the other way, and I don't think it's necessary. As has already been mentioned, you know, you go up another mile or so to the other station, and that works fine. They, they go in, when you go into it, you come out of it, at the light, when you have a light, that's wonderful to be able to come out to a light.
Sure.
I always look for lights when I'm going anywhere.
I don't strike for dry.
And turn right or left with, with the light, and that's certainly safe.
Certainly, different business operators have different business models. Our business model would require it be a actual, a high-traffic location, because it's a high-traffic road, so we want to be able to service more people more quickly, more efficiently, and, and that, that's why the access is critical.
Have you got plans for more gas tanks, if you will, to, to enlarge, you know, what, what you can serve, more people?
There are no plans at this time to expand the canopy, the only thing we would do is probably reskin the outside, put up our colors, and we'd modify the inside as well.
Do you have space enough to expand it, if you desire?
Not to expand the canopy, because there is a steep falloff on the south side of the property, and there's a, a waterway adjacent, and because of that, I think that it would be very challenging. We, we'd like to have, you know, to, to have proper circulation, we most likely, I, I don't wanna say never, but we most likely would never, I don't wanna say never, but we most likely would never expand that canopy. The, the footprint just doesn't allow for it.
Well, Doug, I, you know, I come out of Dibble Road all the time, I've been doing this for 30-some years, and, and there's enough traffic right now that sometimes bothers me, but I just think that we're just, we would just be adding more, more input and, to that. You've got input now going in and coming out at one spot, you can get out to the light, turn right or left at the light when it changes, very safe, and to do this other thing, I, I do not think it improves safety. That's, that's, I'm just speaking for myself now.
Mr. Mayor, and, and please understand, gas stations don't add to the traffic, okay? So, we will work with the traffic of this there, and we will service the traffic in the community that's there, but we are not a destination, so we do not generate traffic.
I don't understand that at all.
You don't understand?
You're not a destination, you are if you, you need some gas.
Yeah, well, we're a convenience, and so, when people, most people make the decision to get gas when their light comes on. So, if they happen to be coming down Hitchcock Parkway, if they can take that right in, that's gonna be very helpful for them. We're not a destination in the, in the fact that they leave work to go home for the day, or they leave their, their home in the morning and say, I'm going to Enmark over at Hitchcock and 421 because they've got the best gas and great fried chicken. I mean, that, that's just, we'd love for that to be the case, and we certainly are trying that from the marketing standpoint, but I'm a realist, and that's not the case.
I noticed when Circle K purchased the other two stations that they removed the tanks. If this, if you don't, if you elect, this is just a curiosity question, if you elect not to close, will the current owner have to remove the tanks, or do you know?
I, I don't wanna speak to that question, it's an environmental question, but, yeah. I believe, I, I believe there is a point in time where they would be required to do that.
I can think of many situations where, where we have an ingress and egress, safety problem in this town, where it, it interferes with traffic flow, and it impairs, it increases safety concerns. One, honey baked ham, for example, when you look at the ingress and egress there right at that corner, you've got two ways to enter, and there's a traffic light there. So, in terms of citing a concern for you and your business, I don't see that as a valid argument, given numerous situations in this town. Number, and secondly, I, I, I sit here and I think, how many times are we going to say no to businesses? How many times? Because of the way I feel personally, how many times do we say no? How many times do we say no to revenue?
How many, how many times do we say no to business?
How many times do we do what, Mr. Mayor?
How many times do we say no to business?
A lot.
I don't remember very, a lot.
But getting back to your point, Ms. Mayor, about the traffic, I mean, I'm not gonna, you know, you know where I live, I'm not gonna drive down and get gas here as a destination, but if I'm on my, on my way home from either university or Augusta, and I need gas, you know, if the price is right, you know, I'll just pull in and get it. I don't think it actually, if you really look at it, the right turn is going to be like an acceleration lane, it's going to be slow 'cause it's starting uphill, going towards your intersection, and having a, having some kind of an access makes sense. Now, most of the people that would be turning right probably will actually turn, you know, if they're coming down on 421, if they wanna get on the Parkway heading south, I think there's another road, I forget exactly what it's called, starts down there by Stiefel Town, and you know, it's kind of a shortcut.
Oh, and then comes on up, by the?
Yeah, and I mean, if they don't take that option, I seriously doubt if they're gonna drive through a gas station, weave their way through a gas station to get on Hitchcock Parkway when there's already a, a circle. So, I kind of agree with Ms. Price, you know, whether, you know, we're not the final arbiter, DOT's gonna have to make the decision one way or another. I don't think it hurts, maybe they'll have some better ideas on, you know, what to do with the intersection. We don't know exactly what they had in mind as far as designing the ultimate Hitchcock Parkway, but to say no because of what, you know, people perceive today, I think is unwise. I think we oughta write the letter, let DOT sort it out, and maybe they'll come up with a solution of some sort, I mean, that's their business.
Well, DOT is gonna sort it out anyway, but if this property were within the city before it got built, I don't think we'd have approved it. I, I, I mean, if we had the traffic engineer that I asked for when I first got on council that we don't have, I, I mean, the, the entrances, exits are too close to the intersection. You just don't wanna do that. I mean, if we were doing honey baked ham again, I don't think it would get approved. But, I mean, the problem with South Carolina is everything's grandfathered, there's so much grandfathering going on.
That is a serious problem, but that's, I'm not sure DOT's gonna allow it, maybe y'all have different, because it's so close to the intersection.
I mean, it's really not our issue, I, I don't think we should even be discussing it.
Right, I think we need to move on.
It's up to DOT.
There's no reason for us to do short-stopping now.
Well, we're not short-stopping.
And I would suggest that each one of us wanna write a personal letter to DOT, we can do that.
Sure.
Well, Roger, did you say DOT had asked for a letter, or just the, just the buyers asked for us to do a letter?
Back in, I believe, August, I was contacted concerning the possibility of a, us sending a letter to SC DOT, of course, the property at that time was outside the city, and I said before we could even consider it, the property would have to be inside the city, and then council and the planning commission would have to go ahead and vote on it. So, that's kinda start the chain of the process of getting it inside the city and then bringing it before the planning commission now. That, the city manager could not write that letter.
I mean, does DOT ask for anything from us?
No, because they're.
Do you think they care what we say?
I'm sure they do.
They, they do, and that's another reason that, quite frankly, we've gone this route, because, because of their involvement in, in the multiple, multiple communities, arts, is that?
That's correct.
It was actually their recommendation that we get the buy-in from the city.
Not meaning to be facetious, but it seems like we've heard arguments for the last over a year and a half about the sparsity of traffic on Hitchcock Parkway and no improvements were needed, and all of a sudden now we've got a critical traffic jam there.
Right, what do you want?
I don't think it'll hurt anything.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you, if you look at the, the traffic counts that were done with the city engineer, the city of Aiken's engineer, the traffic counts are only 200 cars a day, more than it was in 2006. So, the traffic count has not, you know, expanded to a point that you can't drive on the road.
What's the total count?
Eighteen-four.
If people wanna use this gas station and then go south on Hitchcock Parkway, that's gonna be the same number of cars whether they have to go through that intersection or they come right out of this driveway, it's gonna be the same number of cars, it's not gonna add traffic, I don't think it's gonna, certainly won't improve traffic flow, it's certainly won't improve safety, and I don't think it's gonna detrimentally affect it either to any measure.
If you're selling for 140 a gallon, you know, that might attract them.
If you've been to our Charleston Highway location there, it's been a little bit of a battle with Circle K.
But, yeah, I can't get past the, you know, the fact that, you know, these people should've known when they bought the property and developed the property, and then now attempting to sell the property, that this was a restricted access road, and, you know, that, that should've been factored into their business plan from the get-go, and, and, you know, that, that's a hang-up for me, but, but I, I agree with Lessey in the sense that, that, you know... But, uh, but I, I agree with Les in the sense that, uh, you know, we wanna do things that, that help facilitate or, or otherwise empower businesses. Um, you know, I, I can really go either way, I'm not convinced that DOT's gonna give a, give that curb cut anyway because of the proximity of the intersection. It's, I, I can't tell the scale, by the scale on this drawing that we have, but it's, it's only a couple, few hundred feet, and we already know, you know, forgive me for having made reference to it, but we already know that, you know, there was a curb cut, not granted, near the, near the light at Stratford Drive because it was too close to the intersection and it had to be moved well back, um, going north on Whiskey because it, because of the same reason. So, I'm not sure DOT's gonna allow this anyway, and I, I'm not crazy about being put in the spot of having to make the decision without, without knowing what DOT say. And they can at least say whether it was acceptable or not, I would think.
So, even if we voted to, um, have this letter written and DOT decided that they're gonna deny it?
You don't know they will.
I mean, but...
They may.
It's a, it's a great possibility that they would.
Yeah, I, I think it's...
Then, what's your plan then? You won't... They're not gonna... ...do with the acquisition, like you said before?
We'll, we'll move on to other projects.
Yeah, which we need to do.
So, that would, would just... Thank you.
No, I mean, we have to beat this to death. It doesn't make any difference what we do, it's gonna be up to DOT. And they've already said they're gonna, they're gonna wait until they finish their design, which should be pretty close now. They've been on the design phase of this project for a year, and I think the changing of the purpose and need might've even made the project easier for them, so I'm expecting shortly to hear about, uh, a public meeting.
We would need to make, to continue this or, or to just not continue it.
It might actually, it might be...
Mr. City Attorney, I'll call for the question.
I need a second.
Oh, just a minute.
You do need a second. Mr. Mayor, you have a motion to call for the question?
I'll second the question.
We have a second?
Wait, what was the motion that we're calling the question on?
He's...
In other words, take a vote on it.
Oh.
Just take a vote on it the way it is.
Take a vote on it.
And discuss...
We have to have a motion, somebody's gotta make a motion.
Somebody's gotta make a motion.
Well, we gotta come out of discussion or something, you know, we've been twenty, thirty minutes here, so we need to...
He's moving to end of the discussion at this point, then I would assume a motion would be made.
I'm in favor of coming out of the discussion.
Okay, so we're out of the discussion and we need a...
You gotta, you gotta vote on that motion.
All right.
Okay.
Everybody's in favor.
All right, I'll, I'll...
Now, you have to ask for a resolution.
To come out of the discussion.
Out of the discussion.
Out of the discussion. We suspended the rules.
All right, do we have a motion and second to come out of this?
And we're out of the discussion, I, we're waiting for a motion.
Okay, uh, well, you make a motion. You make, make your motion.
All right, I'll propose a motion that would be, uh...
What is it?
The city, uh, send a letter to South Carolina Department of Transportation agreeing with, uh, opening up the, uh, access to Hitchcock Parkway from the subject property.
Okay, all right, that's the motion, that's, uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, I'll second this motion.
Okay, uh, show of hands then to, to approve that motion. One, two, three, four, okay? Oppose? Three. So, it passes, that, uh, send the letter. Okay. Item six, approval of Aiken City Court, Court Jury Box for 2015. Okay, we shouldn't have an awful lot of discussion on this, I hope. Jury Box.
I move approval.
I'll second the motion.
Second it. Uh, any discussion? All my names in that box?
Yes.
Okay, all right, show of hands for approval.
I've been selected before.
You've been selected.
I have too.
Okay.
Before I got in the house.
Okay, petitions and requests then. Do we have any?
Yeah, we have two.
Okay, all right, Mr. Laduke, please.
Okay, the first one is, uh, I wanna say it was probably in August, we discussed that there were some MOUs that council had not seen or heard of, and so, I've been going through them, and this is an MOU that, uh, was first approved, I believe it's in 2007, uh, to have a theater coordinator of which seventy percent of the salary was being paid by Aiken Community Playhouse, and then we paid the other thirty percent. Really no changes, uh, other than a few updates on it, and so, this is a resolution, uh, one, just to bring it to your attention, and two, to make a few, uh, minor changes that are in red in this, uh, concerning, uh, the Aiken Community Playhouse theater position, uh, which has been the same person there since that time. Vivian does a great job.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay. Uh, do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I second.
Okay, discussion? Uh, show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Okay, item two, requests for approval of a revised memorandum of understanding with the South Carolina Fire Academy, Mr. Laduke.
Uh, this was something you approved in November, when we sent it to them, they asked that the indemnification clause found in section four B, uh, be removed, and so, again, anytime that a change is made to a resolution that you pass or an ordinance that you pass, uh, needs to come back to city council. So, we're asking that you reapprove this memorandum of understanding, uh, with that change being made.
Do we have a motion and second for this, please?
I so move.
Second? All right, discussion? Show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Item three, approval to unfreeze employee positions, Mr. Laduke.
Okay, uh, there's a number of employee positions that we'd like to unfreeze that are presented to you tonight. Um, I'll go through some of these with some comments and the rest, uh, you can ask me if you want. The first one is a recreation supervisor one, that was the position that Lisa Hall currently own, uh, not owns, but holds, she's been, though, for so long, it's almost like she did own it.
I think she did own it.
With that portion being removed, uh, they still have programs and then they also have the rentals at Rye Patch. So, this person would be handling the rentals, they'd be handling the programs, uh, we'd be asking more additional programs, like Christmas at Hopelands was done by other staff members. The person would, more than likely, I know this was asked by the friends, uh, more than likely, this person is gonna be stationed at Rye Patch. Uh, we're planning on taking the tourism coordinator, supervisor, whatever, uh, and moving her uptown where the tourism is happening at, and then we can move that person in that particular location, so they'd have a little bit more hands-on. But additionally, about a third of their times, we spent doing other programs and things within recreation, but again, their primary focus is gonna be continuing to do programs and the rentals at Rye Patch. That's that recreation supervisor one. In public safety, uh, the environmental control officer, we, we had two of them, they were both public safety officers, we're recommending that this person who is moving to Ohio, um, and needs to be replaced, uh, that it not be an officer, that it's gonna go ahead and be an individual who would be a class three. A class three versus a class one, uh, a class three is limited on the arrest powers they have, but obviously with a, an animal case, there are certain arrest powers they need, uh, the amount of certification they have to go through, and, and other things would be a far less than, uh, what we currently have. And then we have a few public safety positions, uh, three of which came open just very recently because of Whack and Hut, and then there we had three other ones because of school resource officers and other things within there that we'd like to go ahead and fill. So, those are the positions that we'd like to have, plus the other maintenance workers, uh, pool operator, et cetera. I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
Got the motion. Second.
Okay.
I just would make one comment, that is, it, uh, we still have a high turnover, higher than it probably should be. I, I don't know what to do about that, but, um, you know, we just raised the pay of public safety and I, I know the background of public safety, why we lost at least three of them, but it's, it's frustrating, quite frankly. Um, I thought we had that, that one nipped, but there's still people in every department leaving, and it's a shame. I mean, we, I think, I think we have a good workplace, but I just wonder if there's anything we can do to stem the tide, 'cause turnover just kills us.
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna have some suggestions for council in February. One of the things that we have not done in a long time is have a merit increase. Uh, we've had increases for cost of living and even, even those have been on fairly minor. Uh, in talking to a number of these officers and individuals that have left, but especially the officers, they're very busy and they're, they're doing extremely great job, uh, when there's emergencies, when there's things that need to be done, and then they got some idle time, and, you know, they compare with one another what they do and how they do it, and, and so you have thirty-some people, uh, that are all in the same position, and when one person gets a raise and, and they get the same raise, no matter what level of competency and experience they have, it gets frustrating for some of them. And so, we'd like to go ahead and look at a merit increase this year, and that'll be one of the things that I'll be proposing to you, so that we can, if, if the increase is two percent, that means you could go ahead and, for those that are performing, uh, very well, they'll get a higher than two percent, those that are not performing as well will get less than two percent. And that's one of the things that a number of these public safety officers have mentioned to us, is the fact that they obviously would like to see more pay, but they would like to go ahead and see, uh, be recognized for what they do as an individual.
Which, yeah, which is awfully hard to do. I've heard more negative comments about the pay raise we gave than positive, which is frustrating, but...
That's 'cause everybody got the same raise, no matter how competent they were.
Well, I, I, I understand.
Will that solve all the problems? No, it won't solve all the problems.
But you run into problems when you selectively decide who you're gonna get an interest to and who you're not, and, uh, and that causes turnover as well.
And that's, that goes back to that performance evaluation that everybody's supposed to be completing and filling out, uh, and it'll be tied back to that.
Yeah.
But will that solve all the problems? No.
Okay.
We have a motion.
We got motion in the second already? Any other discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Okay. Without anything else, we adjourn.
All right, just, just wanna mention the fact that I have copied pages out of the bicycle plan, and I'm gonna make a cover memo that I'd like to get to everybody and hopefully we can deal with that at the next meeting.